We'll call a committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for November 16th, 2022, 5:00 PM to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Thor?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meetings of October 26th, 2022, and November 2nd, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Rochenberg?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 7-0. Special presentations. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first special presentation involves the continued discussion and deliberations of the proposed 2023 budget and three-year financial plan. At the last meeting, we were unable to get through the planned deliberations for the evening, so we will pick up where we left off. And that will begin with Chief Financial Officer Deb Naraki discussing the Riverboat Fund. Also talked about how we're going to provide a capital investment overview. Peel back the onion, if you will. Ms. Naraki will be describing all of the areas for which the city receives revenue sources and where the money is derived for the capital improvement projects. After that, I'll come up to the podium and talk about the plans for the Central Area TIF. And after that, Deb Naraki will come back and begin providing an overview on the utility fund. At this point, the plan is to take information from the council about what's being presented tonight, and then come back on the December 7th meeting with the information we received last week, and then begin running through the council recommended changes to the proposed budget. So again, we will be gathering information at the end of this evening's presentations with the plan of beginning winding down to the adoption of the budget on December 21st. The 7th would be the day where we would incorporate and have votes on any proposed amendments. There's also the public hearing on that date, and again, that puts us on a smooth path to the adoption of a balanced budget on the 21st. So unless there are any questions at this point, I'd ask Chief Financial Officer Deb Naraki to come to the podium. Thanks, Steph.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Rick mentioned, we're going to start off with an overview of the Riverboat Fund tonight. And if you look at the across the top of the screen, but we'll begin with the revenues. Our estimated revenues from gaming and admissions tax for 2022 are 8.6 million, and we plan that level throughout the three-year plan '23 through '25. For comparison purposes, prior to the pandemic in 2019, the gaming and admission tax revenues were 8.9 million, so we're almost back to that pre-pandemic level. Other revenues included in the Riverboat Fund are the Riverboat lease payment, which is estimated to be about $1.2 million this year, and increases in each year of the plan by the Consumer Price Index. Video gaming revenues are also deposited in this fund, are estimated to be $500,000 this year and stay at that level throughout the plan. Again, for comparison purposes, in 2019, the gaming revenues were $382,000, so they have increased. Interest in other earnings includes interest on cash balances and rebates from Commonwealth Edison related to the LED streetlight project, and funds received from Nycor under the city's Tree Bank ordinance that have been used to plant additional trees. In the 2023 budget, you will see an OSLAD grant for $338,000. The city was approved for this grant this year, and it will cover approximately 50% of the rehabilitation of Millennium Park Plan for next year. Other grants include grant funding for Bike Route 4 and the I.DOT Metro Rail Grant. Expenditures in 2022 are estimated to be 8.9 million. Revenues will exceed those expenditures by approximately 1.9 million, providing a fund balance of $14 million to carry over and plan for initiatives in the new three-year plan. Expenditures in 2023 are budgeted at $16.7 million for capital expenditures for city buildings and facilities, infrastructure, and vehicles. Funding's also provided for economic development and community agencies. At the end of the three-year plan, in 2025, we would have a fund balance of an estimated fund balance of $6 million that would be carried over to future years to fund initiatives in those years. And at that point, we'll be bringing back street resurfacing to the Riverboat Fund so that those funds can be used for those initiatives. So I don't know if there's any questions about that.
Any questions for Mr. Naraki at this point?
Okay. Now I want to move on to a capital investment overview. Traditionally, when we talk about capital, we talk about the Riverboat because that's our capital fund, and we'll talk about what's in the Central Area TIF and the General Fund. But this year, I just wanted to summarize all the ways that we're investing in capital in our 2023 proposed budget. The 2023 proposed budget includes capital investment of $78 million or about 22% of the total combined city budget. There are 17 different funds that are contributing to our capital investment program for next year. If you include the $13.4 million in the ARPA fund that is planned for lead service line replacements, it brings that capital total up to 91 million, about 25% of the total city budget. Of that 78 million, there's our nine significant projects that account for about $42.7 million of those initiatives. Starting with the largest project would be the Hemmans Cultural Center renovations. Originally, this project was estimated to be about $6.7 million, and we plan to fund it through the Central Area TIF Fund. Due to changes in cost proposals and rising costs, we are now funding an additional $5.7 million from the General Fund for a total of $12.5 million. And a couple weeks ago, Amanda Harris presented on all the options and alternatives for the Hemmans, and if it's the council's approval to take the $12.8 million option, then we'll add the additional funding to the adopted, before we bring it forward. The next project is the synthetic turf multiple-use fields at the Elgin Sports Complex. This project was budgeted in 2022 for $7 million. $6 million was intended to come from the Capital Improvement Fund with an additional $1 million coming from the Route 20 TIF. As you know, the Capital Improvement Fund traditionally funds combined sewer separation each year in the amount of $3 million. In last year's budget, we determined that we would fund that combined sewer separation out of ARPA funds, and we would use that $6 million to do the work at the sports complex. While this project did get started this year, it for the most part is being carried over to next year. And not unlike the Hemmans, with cost increases and changes in plans, the General Fund will be contributing an additional $3 million to this project for a total of $9.3 million. The proposed budget continues funding Neighborhood and Collector Street Resurfacing in the amount of $7.5 million from the Motor Fuel Tax Fund. As you're aware, the city received $7.1 million in rebuild Illinois funds in 2022, 2020 through 2022. And that funding, in addition to our normal allocation of motor fuel tax funds, has allowed us to do these street resurfacing projects through the MFT Fund for three years, '21 through '23. And we anticipate using motor fuel tax to some extent in '24, but by '25, it'll come back to the Riverboat Fund. Also, in the General Fund is the US-20 Ranking Road Roundabout Project. This project's budgeted at $3.5 million. About 50% of this project is funded by STP grant funding, and the other 50% will be funded by roadway impact fees that have been escrowed for projects like this. The 2022 Bond Fund includes $3.1 million for final development of the Jack Cook Regional Park. Carrying over from the 2022 budget is the Dundee Summit Intersection Reconstruction, budgeted at $2.9 million in the Riverboat Fund. The design work has been completed, but construction was postponed due to land acquisition delays. Next would be the DuPage Court Revitalization Project, which you will hear more about later this evening from Amanda Harris. That's budgeted at $2.2 million in the Central Area TIF. The city has also been approved for $1 million in grant funding from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, which will cover about half that project. The 2022 Bond Fund also includes $1 million for the Festival Park Splash Pad. And finally, the Riverboat Budget includes $750,000 for significant renovations of the Lord's Park Pavilion porch. In addition to those nine significant projects in next year's budget, there are a large number of other projects that are categorized into these categories on the bottom. Mostly funded by the Riverboat, there's $3.9 million for the maintenance and upkeep of city facilities, including roofing, HVAC, flooring replacements, and many other projects. Also in this category is boilers for the center for the mechanical room that was built this year, tree replacements and replacements of the Police Department's fire alarm system. The citywide budget plans to invest $3.6 million in city vehicles. This includes an ambulance and a fire engine that were ordered in 2022 but will not be received till '23, so they're carried over. The emergency command vehicle actually ordered in 2021 that is expected to be received next year, and the funding is again carried over for that. The funding also includes two snowplows, general fleet replacement, and an electric vehicle pilot program. These vehicles mostly come from the General Riverboat and Equipment Replacement Funds. The capital outlay budget also includes $3.5 million for recreation facilities and parks. Included in this funding is the Millennium Park Rehabilitation, which, as we mentioned in the Riverboat Discussion, that is 50% funded by an OSLAD grant. It also includes playground replacement and addition of pickleball courts at Mulberry Grove Park, a skate park, soccer field renovations, tennis court repairs, and capital repairs required to reopen Lord's Park Pool. Included in that funding is $230,000 for capital repairs to open the pool. This funding is only for capital initiatives related to the pool, and Maria Campad is available to discuss any other questions surrounding reopening the pool. Also included in the budget are about $2.8 million for other infrastructure improvements. This includes the construction of Bike Route 4, the annual parking and alley program, the annual sidewalk program, traffic signal upgrades, and a pedestrian upgrade at the Bowes Road-McLean intersection. The equipment and furniture category is budgeted at $1.2 million and includes computers, lawn mowers, furniture, replacement, cardiac monitors, and other fire department equipment. And lastly, the miscellaneous category, budgeted at $1.1 million, is set aside for property acquisition, demolition, and remediation efforts. With that, take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Naraki? Ms. Paul?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deb, for the overview. Can you talk a little bit about the electric vehicle pilot program that you mentioned?
I think that Mike Povens is going to come up and talk about that.
Thank you, Mike.
You could have done it, you know. Yes, the electric vehicle pilot program is designed to basically put our toe in the water. It's a request for $250,000. With that, we would hope to purchase two to three electric vehicles, probably for use by code enforcement. Would also allow us to build one to two charging stations specifically for those vehicles, so they would be for city use only initially. And, you know, we'll use the information and the data we collect from that program to inform our future decisions on a larger program. We're also looking into several public-private partnerships, so these are firms that will help us develop a large-scale, city-wide electric EV program. So we're still working on that. They're going to be kind of running on parallel paths. But so the budget request is for a city program specifically, where we purchase, we install, some of that money would be used for training our fleet staff, different technology, safety, that type of thing.
So it would include the purchase of two vehicles, and then you said putting in some charging stations?
Correct, for those vehicles.
And there is or is not some type of grant funding potentially available to help us offset those costs?
We don't have anything confirmed. The grant funding situation for EV is a very fluid situation right now. So, I mean, we're continuing to, most of the discussion on grant funding is coming out of the federal transportation bill. The focus of the EV grants so far, and for most of the grants with that bill, is for much larger-scale programs. I believe one of them is they've funded the states for statewide EV routes. So basically, routes stem to stern, fore to aft. So those you'd see on perhaps on 90 or some of the interstates. So the EV money hasn't really made its way to the municipalities yet, but we're certainly exploring any of those options that we can find, whether it's for this, you know, our city managed program, whether it's for a citywide program that we partner with a private firm with, or the city hall parking lot when we do that.
And I know Public Works maintains our police fleet. Is there any interest or any possibility of including a police vehicle in the pilot? Because I know that there are some police departments across the country that are using electric vehicles in their fleet.
We met with the police staff probably a year ago at this point and had discussed that as we were trying to formulate how we move forward. And the consensus was that let's get into a program with vehicles that are not for emergency response. We don't want our first attempt to be a squad car that has to report to an emergency and have issues with it. So it's certainly on the menu for the future, but this program would not include any police vehicles. There are other departments that use, I mean, we talk a lot about EV, there's other alternative fuels as well, compressed natural gas, things like that. My last employer has a very large CNG fleet, and so I don't think we should take those off the table necessarily. But so to answer your question, no police vehicles in 2023.
I'll just take advantage of the fact that you're standing there and flip over to a couple of capital questions. And you and I had this discussion offline about Dundee Summit, that project, and the improvements that'll be taking place over the next couple of years. Since that area is part of a TIF, right now, I know you said that the schedule has been delayed, so the intersection improvements are going to be done in 2023, but then the area north of that intersection will be done in 2024, correct?
That's correct. They're two separate projects, the Dundee Summit Intersection and the Dundee Avenue Reconstruction. That's how you'll see them.
And then part of those improvements does include lighting, street lighting?
Dundee Summit does not have an overall lighting plan. We're looking at adding lights through the COMEd program for the Dundee Avenue Reconstruction in 2024. We are having our consultant do a lighting analysis, and we're going to ask them for a recommendation on what it would take to bring the lighting along that entire route up to a lighting standard. And there are several standards you can go by. There's the federal standard, there's state standards. So we haven't made a commitment to put streetlights throughout that project, but we're looking at it. And that may be an opportunity to extend that further south into the Dundee Summit Intersection if we felt that was viable, worthwhile.
Great, because that is one thing I have heard from business owners and residents that live in that area, that it's really dark along that corridor. I would also be interested, and this is probably more for the manager, since it is in a TIF area, if we can look at some type of facade improvement program for the businesses lining that corridor that they can tap into with TIF money. I mean, obviously, if we're going to, you know, make the investment and redoing the street, redoing the infrastructure there, it would be nice to, you know, clean up some of the buildings that are along that path, too, and at least provide some type of incentive for business owners to make that investment and be able to access some funding to help offset that cost. So that's one ask I have of TIF funding for that area. And the other question I have is regarding Lord's Park Pool, so I guess that's a Maria question. It is, was that our only option? I know that that was something that folks, there was a lot of public outcry about maintaining the pool and reopening the pool. But were there some other options that we may want to consider in terms of some other type of water amenity in that area?
I'm going to go to the bullpen on this one. It has water in it. I'm done.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of your question.
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you to staff for including this money in the budget for Lord's Park Pool. I know that there's been a lot of outcry from folks regarding the desire to reopen the pool. But my question was, were there some other water amenities that are an option for that area besides the pool?
There are. I mean, a splash pad is always an option in that location. You know, certainly a splash pad would not be able to be opened in 2023 because there's construction that would have to take place. But the splash pad is an option. We have gotten a rough estimate on that. But, you know, additional work would need to be done. A splash pad gives us a longer operating season. So our current outdoor pools are open from usually the first week in June, till about the second week in August, right before the kids go back to school. So it's a very short operating season. A splash pad is a longer operating season, simply because we're not dealing with the staffing issues that we have in the past. You know, it's primarily a function of maintenance, keeping that operation going. So typically, like Festival Park Splash Pad is open from typically Memorial Day till at least Labor Day or later in September, depending on what the weather is like. So it's a larger operating season. The splash pad, if we operate it the same as Festival Park, would be free to the users. There would be no fee attached to it. And like I said, it's a smaller staffing model. You know, with the opening of Lord's Park Pool, in addition to the cost to get that facility back up and running, is the staffing of it. Lifeguard shortages was not unique to us last year. And had we had three pools to open last year, we would have not have had enough staff to do that. And that is a real, real concern that we put this money into that pool to get that facility back up and running, and then we get to the middle of May and we don't have the staff to be able to do it.
Understood. And I'm not opposed to, you know, moving forward and kind of rolling the dice on that. And hopefully, you know, we're crossing our fingers, obviously, that we'll have staffing, you know, available to open the pool, because I know that that appears to be something that folks, particularly on the east side, are very much attached to. But I guess maybe what I was thinking is if we had some options to put in front of people and invite and invited folks to, you know, kind of hear what the different options are. Lord's Park Pool, bringing that back open, understanding what some of the challenges are, but then also looking at other options for that area too, whether it's a splash pad or some other type of water amenity, and getting feedback from the community before we, you know, decide on one thing or another. I would be more comfortable with that. But at least there's, you know, a recognition, you know, with the money that is here in the proposed budget, that we do want to do something versus just closing it down and walking away. I don't think any of us want to do that. But I would like for us to at least pursue, you know, looking at a whole lot of different options. Because people need to understand the difference in the seasons for all of these different amenities and the staffing constraints and concerns that are attached to having a pool.
And we do understand too that people in that area, they are tied to that facility and they do want to see a water amenity over in that area. And those are certainly options to get more input. The problem that we'll run into or that we potentially could is that to get that pool back up for the 2023 season, the sooner we know that that's our directive, the sooner we need to start. You know, the supply chain issues are nothing new to anybody anymore. So there's some things, certainly one of the big projects that need to be done there is the refurbishing of the slide, which won't be done until the weather breaks in the spring. However, we need to get it on somebody's calendar now. If we wait until into next year to be able to do that, we may not get it on somebody's calendar. That would be my fear.
No, understand. And I don't know how quickly we'd be able to put something together to get some input. I mean, I don't know how anyone else feels about it. But I mean, if it's moving forward just with the pool, I'm, you know, I'm fine with that. But I just want everyone to understand what some of the challenges may be if we go down that path. That's all I had.
Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. While we have you here, I figured I'd ask a follow-up question to this project. I've run into some folks who have talked about how people used to ice skate on Lord's Park, yeah, the lagoon. There's an item in front of us last year to dredge that. And I don't know anything about this. So I guess my question is, is there a possibility of that ever coming back?
Of dredging the lagoon?
Of ice skating on the lagoon.
That's probably a better Mike Poobin's question, but my, no, I don't think, and the mayor will probably confirm to this, there will never be ice skating on those lagoons again, even if you dredge it. It's just too much development in that area, too much runoff from salt on the roads and so forth. So as much as everybody loved that back in the day, that, like I said, even if we dredge those lagoons, would not be a possibility.
Okay. And I guess the thought process there is if we're looking at option A, reopening the pool, option B, splash pad, and there are savings with the splash pad option, is there any other amenities that we could provide in the area that go into the cold season? Obviously, it's not going to be ice skating, but it's just that logic. Is there anything that your department's thought of for the winter season to try and get people outside?
Well, I mean, there's always the option, you know, similar to the ice rink that we had out here that was a coiled system. However, that's a larger investment and chillers on the building and so forth to be able to operate that. Outside of that, you know, for many years, the park maintenance staff made man-made ice rinks. And simply because of the weather change, climate change, whatever you may call it, if we even have that option, they work numerous, numerous hours to make that ice and it might be there for a day or two or three and then it's gone. So that's not really even an option anymore either.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Ms. Rauschenberger.
Thank you. I think, I know you're doing an overall parks and recreation plan right now, correct?
We're doing an upgrade or update to our master plan, that's correct?
Yeah, so you have a core master plan. So I do think we need to look very closely at what amenity would be most useful, cost-efficient, able to be, you know, enjoyed by the neighborhood. And I probably see it as part of the bigger plan. I think a splash pad, you know, might be a great, you know, sort of opportunity. But I think, as with the master plan, I think what we somehow miss is that the families over in that area that have children don't show up to the master planning, you know, the event that you had when people came. So I would like, if it's possible, and I don't know if we should put, one of my thoughts is just to put, maybe not open it this year and wait until there's a consensus in the community, but to actually go to the schools in the area and have things printed in Spanish and send them home with the children. I mean, you can get to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of families in that manner. And ask what they think they would like to have. I think, you know, this is really a family-oriented amenity and I think it's very hard to get to those families to ask for their input and permission. So that's just one of my thoughts.
We will have a second public input for the master plan early next year. Instead of trying to kind of shoehorn it in during the holiday season here, we've decided to wait until after the holidays. So that will be another public input meeting that the consultants will host. And we'll probably have that at the center again, so we have enough room. That's an opportunity for people to come and provide additional feedback for the master plan process. Probably, you know, when the master plan is completed, it will tell us the facilities that we lack in the area or within our community. It will tell us, you know, we have too much of this and not enough of this. That's the feedback we're going to get from the master plan, as well as them taking into consideration the comments from the residents in the area. But you are exactly right. We need to get those residents to participate in that. And we did have a really good turnout at our first one and we had a good online response onto the online survey that we.
Yeah, I was at the first one. And, you know, I'd want to not give people credit that were there. But it certainly wasn't a lot of families. I think there was a lot of people interested in pickleball.
When you look at the whole.
They tend to be my age and older.
When you look at the whole of the population of the community, you're right. It wasn't a stellar turnout, but for what we typically get, it was a good turnout.
Yes. So, you know, just the thought that the consultants can somehow, again, you have access to all these families through schools and a short survey, you know, asking specific questions, maybe specific to neighborhoods. So that's just my thought that they, to get that kind of feedback. You know, you might have people just loving the idea of a splash pad or not at all. And, but we won't know. The way we're doing it is too hard to get those families information, I guess. So it's just a thought. And I understand we've got a chicken and the egg here. This plan is coming out. Do we do something before the plan? You know, I always say let's, we could, should we really wait for the plan? But I understand, as you said, you have to get people lined up to do repairs. So I know it's difficult.
So it is, it is just try to get everything lined up so that you can make the decision as soon as possible to be able to reopen that facility or maybe we consider the additional input from the master plan and work more with the community and hold that off for the 2023 season. And then do neighborhood meetings, do meetings in the area and get some accurate feedback.
That would be sort of my recommendation.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Thank you to city staff too for your budget presentations. It's much appreciated. Thank you, Maria, for staying with us and answering these questions. Just a couple of follow-ups. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that Wing Park Pool consistently needs repairs during the season? Is that accurate at all?
No, I mean, there's always preseason maintenance that needs to be done. And then there's postseason maintenance. Absolutely, there could be any number of issues that arise during the year. But typically, they are resolved rather quickly.
Okay. And the reason why I asked that is because I was wanting to see if there was an opportunity to leverage any work that's being done at the Lord's Park Pool in bringing that back, if we can leverage that work into getting some things done at Wing Park Pool, if there was some issues that needed to be taken care of. But you're saying that that's not, it won't be necessary.
We've already leveraged those opportunities. So, which is the reason for some of the capital investment to get Lord's Park Pool back reopened. Is that we've used some of the pumps that were there or some of the systems that were there to be able to continue to operate Wing Park Pool.
Okay. And just to give my two cents on the, on Lord's Park Pool coming back, the residents, I think, have made it pretty clear that they want a pool. And I, you know, I would be interested if that the same group that showed up maybe a few months ago, you know, if they, you know, have a different interest. I would be very interested in hearing that. But from everything I've ever heard, they would like a pool back. And looking at the dollar tag that's associated with that, I know that's not an easy thing to accomplish financially, but it's our most populated side of our city and they're asking for to have their pool back. Knowing also too that their rec center is also gone. So there's, we have the most populated side of our city who are losing amenities, city amenities. And so I'm very, so I definitely would like to see the pool come back. And if there's a different variation that we actually end up getting to, I mean, that's fine just as long as residents want the same. So those are all my questions and my comments from now. So thank you.
Anything else for Maria at this time? Mr. Shaw.
Just a quick question. You said in the splash pad you did do like an initial just estimate. What was that kind of rough estimate about?
Rough estimate was about 2.2 million.
2.2 million, okay. So if we were to do that, it would be, you'd have to take into account kind of what that would look like from capital improvements now, maintenance ongoing, staffing, to kind of see how many years that you would kind of be. Because there's, the pool, just to get it running, is just to get it running and up and going. But then you've got operational costs, I'm assuming, too, each year as well.
Correct. And once again, you know, staff's biggest concern is a very real staffing issue.
And that's where I guess I would be, I feel like we've already, until we see something change in the staffing situation, the labor market, I guess I'm concerned about putting that pressure on staff now to say, hey, let's go full steam ahead until we see something change in the environment. I'd be open to some other creative, you know, event programming in the park that's outside of the pool or something like that for families that they could use in that, you know, within the park as a whole. But I think I'd be resistant to doing the investment in Lord's Park Pool this year myself. I know the other topic that did come up was the electrical vehicle pilot program. I still struggle with that. I think I would be much more interested in looking at some of the other fleet options. You know, like from a compressed natural gas perspective, I know we've talked about that years ago. I don't think that ever took off. I'd be interested even in going back to see what additional hybrid vehicles are there or would be an option for different things. I think those are much more cost-effective at this time. I just, electrical vehicles are expensive and they're at premium. And I just, I don't think that's the right use of taxpayer dollars, especially when most of us, exceptions maybe on the council die this year, but most of us don't feel comfortable spending that type of money on an electric vehicle ourselves. So thus, asking our community to use it, their taxpayer dollars on that as well, that's a stretch for me. I think that's too much to ask. Those are my questions. Oh, one, no. I'll get back to one when Deb's back up. I got some other financial, overall financial questions, but I think those are it for now.
Okay. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maria, for coming up here. My question to you is if it takes, I think you can open the pool, while they're permitting like 60 days in a season. Does that sound about right?
June, July, probably 60, 75, somewhere within there.
And so what would be the cost for pre-operational and post-operational for one season? If you were just to guess at it.
Well, the total estimate for Lord's Park Pool, including the capital amount that is in the budget, would be about $650,000.
Really?
So that would be the startup, the staffing, the daily operation through the season and probably most of the shutdown.
Understanding that there's an issue with staffing, to me, it just seems like the pool is an amenity that covers a big range of residents, from young kids to adults. And it's something for 60 days. And $600,000, even though it's a lot of money, we spend on other issues where it doesn't cover every, you know, the large range of residents. I just think that that would be something that we should try to look at rather than spend like a couple million dollars re-making it into something else, you know, like the splash pad. Because again, that would just affect, even limit our residents on how many people would be using that. I know it's very popular. And then, just to add on to what Councilman Shaw was saying, to me, I'm not there yet also with electric vehicles because people who are making these recommendations, I would go as far as to see how many people have electric vehicles, how many people have charging stations in their homes. Because for us to invest a lot of money in that, I think it's kind of premature right now. I think that money should come from the government or the state and maybe five years from now. But to make big modifications in the city, that'll be very costly. To me, it just seems premature. Just had to get that out there. So thank you.
Ms. Rauschenberger, you had another comment?
Yeah, just one quick. Did somebody mention, I don't know, I was kind of trying to get my budget up on my computer, the, that imitation turf out at the sports center? Did we mention that? No.
The synthetic fields?
Yeah, the synthetic turf? No, okay, I'm sorry. I think I misheard that. Okay. Yeah, it's in the plan.
Okay, I'm sorry. Didn't write you.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if there was an amount that was associated with that.
Well, there is an amount in different parts of the budget.
Okay, sorry, I think I misheard. Thank you.
Mr. Thorndyke, do you have a comment? Your last one hasn't spoken, except for me.
Well, I think the only thing I caught here is that I think the public outcry for the Lord's Park Pool speaks for itself and with hopes that that pool itself does come back. That's certainly where my feelings are. Of course, I know things change and I know that certainly they change with employment of the young people. I mean, it's hard for me to understand why they can't get help. When I was a kid, there were more kids that wanted to be lifeguards than they had opportunities. And now it's the opposite. Hopefully, there's some incentive that can be put in place for that. But I'm certainly for the pool. When it comes to the electric vehicles and the pilot program, I think the terms used by the last couple council members, premature, that's certainly where I'm at. I just don't, I would prefer even having a public input survey on that before we had ever do it. I think it's too soon. I'm not, I'm not a fan of electric vehicles until they are in a price range that's comfortable for everybody, that's also in a fair situation. Hybrids, as Councilman Shaw said, for code people. Now you're going to be, you're going to be making a difference with the environment, but you're also making a significant savings for the taxpayers. And you're also not having to put those charging stations in and that expense that goes along with it. Down the road, I can see as things move that way. I think some of the people. I think some of the people in the higher ups in our country are pushing this on everybody and they're making you look at it before we're ready in a fair manner of expense. That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Maria, for the, as far as the, the parks planning process is happening, just one trend that's happening around the country that I noticed is that the parks that are being built or parks that are being renovated, they're adding workout equipment, not actual weights, but things that you can use, that the, can use in order to workout. Can you talk a little bit about that and if, you know, you plan on incorporating that inside of these parks at all?
So, so we do have that right now at Grohlak Park. Grohlak Park was renovated, hmm, six years ago, maybe? Don't hold me to that.
Okay.
But there is a, a workout station within Grohlak Park. And when we, when we look to renovate playground structures, we work with a consultant to develop several different designs and ideas from different manufacturers, and then we take those to the residents in the area of that specific park to get feedback on, on what they would like to see. And that's kind of how we choose what type of design we put in a neighborhood park. But right now, Grohlak does have that, that type of equipment in it.
Okay. But we're curious or interested in maybe putting some more of this equipment in other parks around the city.
We, we definitely could. Like, like I said, we try to get a gauge from the residents as to what they like to see, and then we work from there.
Okay. And next pickleball. So we received, I think we all probably received an email from a pickleball fan, I'm just gonna call it, in the last couple of days, and they were inquiring about pickleballs inside of the, or at the new sports complex that's to be. Can you talk a little bit about that? I don't know if you received that email too as well and what the plans are?
I, yeah, I did see that email. So for the 2023 budget, we do have pickleball courts. We have a renovation of Mulberry Grove Playground, and currently there are tennis courts at Mulberry Grove, but there's a large spans of open space, and, and we do have designs for pickleball courts. So really, what, what we've done now is within town, we have, we have 22 tennis courts, and on those 22 courts, 12 of them are lined for pickleball as well. So, so we do have that option. Your, your diehard pickleball individual, they want the standalone pickleball courts, so they're not sharing courts with tennis, tennis not sharing with pickleball.
Right.
So that is our plan for Mulberry Grove Park, and that would be, that would be a project for 2023.
Okay. But not at the new, new sports complex? That wasn't a part of the plan?
That is not part of the plan right now. It, that was part of the original concept plan.
Right.
That was done in 202017. Now with the loss of the Rayco building and the, and the, the beginning of the development of those two synthetic multi-use fields, we will need to revisit the original concept plan, and my guess is pickleball courts will be part of that new concept plan when we develop it.
Okay. Coming back to Lower's Park Pool and us being able to secure teenagers to, to work or young people to work there, what do you believe is the, the barrier in that? Do you think it's pay? Do you think there's just not, you know, the, the interest isn't there? I mean, what, and what can we do maybe to, to, to get them there?
So when we're talking about lifeguards specifically, so now we, as everybody has, we've had a lack of being able to fulfill our part-time positions, you know, this past year, the year before. With lifeguards specifically, it's, it's not the glamorous job that it was five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, where all the high school kids wanted to be a lifeguard, they wanted to sit out in the sun and hang out with their friends all day. That's not the job of a lifeguard anymore. It's, it's a lot of responsibility. Kids know better than to be out in the sun 12 hours a day because of the issues that caused. But it, you think about a, the responsibility of a lifeguard, when you have a 15-year-old that pulls somebody out of the water and has to resuscitate that person, that is a lot of responsibility, that's a lot of responsibility on adult. We're asking 15, 16, 17, 20-year-old kids to do that. So it's not, it's not, that, that part-time position itself is not the glamour job that it used to be. It's, it's hard work, it's a lot of responsibility. We feel that our hourly rate for the, for the pool staff is good. You know, would we draw more people if it was higher? I'm not really sure that we would. It, it is, it's a really, really tough job.
Okay. Well, what is currently the, the part-time wage, hourly wage?
Uh, for lifeguard, minimum, what's minimum wage right now? 12? Our lifeguards start above minimum wage. I can get back to you on the exact rate of our lifeguard right now.
Okay. What's the range?
It's industry-wide, too. This is a unique challenge.
Correct. This, yes, we're, we're talking lifeguard issues industry-wide and not just specific to our area here.
Okay. Lastly, the electrical vehicles. You know, electrical vehicles become more affordable every year. Right now, you can buy electric vehicles for the same price, nearly the same price as you can for a vehicle that is just all gas. Electric vehicles are here to stay. They're not going anywhere, they're just going to continue to evolve. So I believe that making some investments in some of those, in some of the charging stations would be prudent on our end to, to provide that benefit to the residents of the community. If we want to know how many are in the county and in the city, that information is available through the county, and we can find out how many vehicles are registered in the city, and we can also find that information out through the state. And so maybe we allow those numbers to dictate how many charging stations that we do, but to say that we don't need them, you know, I, I don't, I think that's probably a little short-sighted. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch on the EV point real quick. With all due respect, if we're making decisions based on things that we own, I mean, I wouldn't be voting on anything up here, so I just want to challenge that process first and foremost. And I, I didn't anticipate this, but I'm pretty certain, common knowledge is that you do save money in terms of fueling those vehicles in addition to maintenance costs for electric vehicles. I'm not speaking with 100% certainty. Again, I didn't anticipate this conversation, but if this is really gonna be the challenge, I'd be willing to dive into that myself or have staff come back and do a cost analysis of what we would say would cost per mile for those vehicles, so we can discuss the savings and have that conversation. I just wanted to address those points.
Anything else for Ms. Campada? Thank you, Maria. Take yourself off the hook. I have a, I have a, a comment, and for, this is for staff, I think. It's, it's appropriate under the Riverboat, and I'd like to go back to the, what the Riverboat was originally intended to do, and that's to fund revitalization efforts in the downtown. And I have a proposal I'd like to have staff investigate, talking to Jennifer Fukala yesterday. And this goes back to an article that was in the Daily Herald about tiny shops in Batavia that are extremely successful, and they're built on a boardwalk that doesn't cost a lot of money to put them up. They're like, she said they're basically like a shed, and they provide electric power to them. She went to a Main Street seminar or program in Bloomington, and she said they seem to be very popular. I'd recommend staff take a look at a property that we have downtown where the old theater was. It's now a gravel parking lot that has no amenities to it, doesn't do anything for the city at this point, other than provide auxiliary parking space, and take a look at that as a spot that we could put in a boardwalk and some tiny shops. And she said she automatically thought that she would have six or eight people that would be willing to rent those shops, that would grow from the market, from the, the summertime market into a small business, and that would be an intermediary step for them into owning their own business. So I think that's good business practice, doesn't cost a lot of money. The property is obviously the city's, and if a development opportunity ever comes along, it's not a problem for us to, to relocate those or move those shops out, but it could be an amenity downtown, and she said they are very, very popular in Batavia. So.
We'll talk to Ms. Mukala, Fukala, we'll get the information from her, and she'll be able to come back to the council, present a recommendation for proposal, we'll begin moving on that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Central Area TIF, established in 2002 to assist the city in the redevelopment of its central area, but more specifically the central business district. Today, it still remains Elgin's most successful tax increment financing district. The Central Area TIF has assisted in the funding of major downtown redevelopment initiatives, including the $55 million Fountain Square Mixed-Use Residential Redevelopment along the Fox River, that occurred in 2005, the $13 million Award-Winning Riverside Drive Promenade, completed in 2014. Also, $6.35 million was contributed to the $16 million rehabilitation of the Elgin Tower Building, a historic rehabilitation, creating 45 market-rate apartments that went, went live, if you will, in 2018. All of the downtown central business district resurfacing is also funded by the TIF. $22 million has been used to do the infrastructure work in the city's downtown, the sidewalks, streetscaping, actually, but that doesn't include the water and sewer, $22 million otherwise. It's the largest TIF district in the city, 1,874 buildings, approximately 1,000 acres. Of those 1,000 acres, however, about 40% of it, 436 acres, is accounted for by streets, alleys, railway rights of ways, and a portion of the Fox River. The majority of it is in the city's downtown. Before the 2007 recession, the TIF was a very profitable, was very profitable in providing the revenue necessary for the city's redevelopment. However, with the 2000 recession, the city lost about one-third of the duration with the TIF with declining EAVs for the properties. From 2007 until the 2015 tax year, revenue or the increment from the TIF declined each of those years. It wasn't until 2015 that the city began seeing the increases that are expected with tax increment financing districts. In 2019, the EAV and the TIF grew by 11%. In 2020, it grew by 4%, and in 2021, we saw a 6% increase. At this point, the annual revenue of TIF, increment revenue is stabilized around $4.7 million, and that's accounted for in the first line in this chart showing the strategic initiatives. We have the benefit in the remaining years of the TIF, which expires in 2025, and getting infusions from some exceptional work performed by Mike Poobens and Grants and Amanda Harris as well. Adding to the revenues for the, for the TIF during the 2022 through 26 financial plan is $2.5 million in, in grant assistance for the, for the Dundee Avenue improvements. Additionally, we are seeing $1 million for the Dupage Court renovation and $2.1 million for the Civic Center Plaza renovation. Again, it's through the work of Mike Poobens, Amanda Harris, and through the assistance of our local legislators, Senator Castro and Representative Mueller, that they've been able to supplement the investments that the city's been making in these areas. There are two other TIF districts in the city, the Bluff City and the US Route 20 TIF. The Bluff City TIF is only beginning now to generate revenue from the mining reclamation work that is occurring in that district. The US Route 20 TIF was originally created with the purpose of constructing the new headquarters for the John B. San Filippo and Sons at the southeast corner of US Route 20 and Highway 31. While that development, while plans for that development were occurring, San Filippo ultimately chose to relocate to the vacated facility by Panasonic Corporation at the southeast corner of Interstate 90 and Randall Road. So in 2013, the city acquired the former San Filippo property on the southwest corner of 20 and 31 and is now using that for the expansion of the sports complex. The US 20, Route 20 TIF is not expected to generate any meaningful revenue in the foreseeable future. The $1 million balance in that fund is being used to help supplement the funding for the planned athletic field expansion. The most significant planned initiative in the remaining five years of the TIF is the Dundee, the Dundee Avenue Reconstruction Project. $9.7 million in TIF revenue is allocated for this, in addition to the $2.5 million that Mr. Poobens has secured from the, the Kane Kendall Council of Mayors. In addition to the substantial projects that I'm going to talk about briefly in the next couple of minutes, want to point out that the financial plan also incorporates funding for historic rehabilitation grants in the TIF and for the alley rehabilitation program. The 2023 budget also includes funding for an analysis of the existing downtown brick pavers and streetscape amenities to determine replacement options and property demolition, and also to consider property demolition and other remediation efforts. $500,000 has been allocated for that work. The plan also continues its practice of setting aside about $50,000 annually for miscellaneous repairs needed to maintain the streetscape improvements. The sig, well, one of the things Councilmember Powell that you mentioned is facade improvements, and the city is willing to consider facade improvements for any building located in the TIF on a case-by-case basis. We do have structured programs in place, the fire sprinkler grant program, there's historic rehab facade programs, but any business within the TIF that has a proposal for rehabilitation, we like to apply the flexibility that is necessary to see what benefit that that can provide to those areas. So while there isn't any funding expressly allocated on the Dundee Avenue area, if you look down to the bottom of the 2025 plan and you see the number $4.7 million, that is unallocated revenue. It doesn't all exist there now, but there's unallocated revenue that can be used outside of this plan for doing work with that, with, with facade improvements or other matters. Again, what's important to note is, at this point, the TIF is expiring in 2025. While there is state legislation that allows the extension of a TIF for an additional 12 years, the legislative approval of that is contingent upon all other impacted or affected taxing bodies that are located by the TIF consenting to the city's request to expand it for that time period. We have two years to begin doing that work. That'll involve both work by the staff and legislators on the dais with their cohorts in the different taxing districts to see if we can bring agreement going forward on that. We believe that with the loss, if you will, of about one-third of the duration of the TIF because of the, of the recession, that's a compelling argument to try and claw back some of that lost time with the 12-year extension. But that's something that we'll be getting in earnest, initially by staff, and again, my sense is, you as elected officials will be talking to your cohort, cohorts and legislative bodies to, to make the case for, for the extension. Significant projects in the TIF. First and foremost is the Hemmans Cultural Center renovation that we discussed a couple weeks back. $6.7 million in TIF funding that is being supplemented with $5.7 million from the general fund. Expected it sometime by the first meeting in November. We were requested for proposals that would show what the renovation would look like absent the use of general funds. We expect to have that at that time, and we'll present that for future council consideration. Additional projects within the, within the five-year plan of the TIF include the Courtyard at 40 redevelopment project. This is an 11.34 million mixed-use redevelopment of the five-story building located at 42 Page Court. It's an adaptive reuse of Elgin's first steel-framed building that was constructed initially in 1893. The redevelopment is going to be converting the mostly vacant upper-story office space into a mix of 40-studio, one-in-two-bedroom market-rate apartments. About 4,500 square feet of ground-floor commercial space is also going to be provided to contribute to the active streetscape both on Dupage Court and Spring Street. Like the adaptive reuse of the Elgin Tower Building, the Courtyard at 40 requires historic tax credits and TIF assistance. The developer, Elgin Partners, has been speaking with Mark Malat, and they're working through the final stages of the $3 million in assistance that they need for federal, state, and historic tax credit, and we're hoping to see work beginning closely. The, or soon. The budget initially in 2023 for the redevelopment at 42 Page Court is $3.1 million. Council may recall that the redevelopment agreement with the developers contemplated a contingency that had to be justified by the, by the developers. With the recognition of the increasing cost for constructions that occurred since that redevelopment agreement was, was approved, I've recommended to Chief Financial Officer Naraki, and she concurred, to fund the balance of that contingency in the 2024 plan, and that amounts to $780,000. So again, bringing that to a total of $3,000,000. So again, bringing that to a total of 3.9, just under $4 million in assistance for the Dupage Court revitalization. One of the items that we can talk about for potential refunding to free up revenue in the TIF is the municipal center parking lot replacement. This includes proposals to create a fully sustainable rehabilitation of the city's parking lot and also includes provisions for providing electrical charging stations within that parking lot. We're going to get an opportunity once again to hear from Mike Pubins, who can talk about the proposals for these charging stations. We're still going through, we talked about grants for charging stations. What's clear right now is there's more money available for what they call the Level 3 fast charging stations. That's where the money is right now, but there's there's questions or there's arguments that suggest for the type of improvement like the municipal parking lot, where we're bringing occasional visitors that do parking when they visit Court or the downtown, that you may not need that Level 3 charging station. So those are the types of the issues being in a fluctuating environment where we don't have definitive guidance on on what we should be doing going forward. But Mr. Pubins will be talking about what those options are and, more importantly, the costs that are associated with those. Mr. Pubins' recommendations are informed by the work that was performed by Sustainability Coordinator Michaela Larson, who's done work in conjunction with Mr. Pubins with consultants to get information about what the industry norms or what are becoming emergency industry norms for the percentage of charging stations for a lot of that size are. So without further ado, let's get Mr. Pubins up here.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
So, thank you. I just wanted to take a few minutes and talk about the city hall parking lot reconstruction. We've talked about this at prior meetings. Initially, went in looking at sustainability options for construction, and you may remember that last year, we discussed and council requested that we move forward one of the options, kind of a mid-level option. Since that time and with the advent of EV technology and the discussion on possible funding, we've also, we had always had the intent of preparing that project for possible EV installation, and we've had some opportunity now as additional information has become available to put some numbers behind that. So this is one option presenting to you tonight. It is, I want to call it the high end as if it's overly expensive or wasteful, but it, as Manager Kozel mentioned, it considers the Level 3 charging station to be the desired infrastructure that we'd want to put, based in part on the use of a municipal parking lot. So Level 1 stations are slow chargers, take overnight or longer to provide a full charge. Level 3, you can get a full charge anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour or so, depends on the batteries, depends on the station, but so again, with the with the assumption that a municipal lot is not somewhere where people come and park all day typically, we thought that the Level 3 charging stations would be a more appropriate design to use if we move forward with them. So that is why we're presenting Level 3 today. We certainly don't have the entirety of the information that we'll need to make that decision. But again, just to give you some idea of of the scope of a possible project. So the reconstruction of the parking lot is not in the 2023 budget. Right now, it's planned for 2024. We're working on grant funding from multiple sources. There are two EPA grants, one is focused on pollution reduction, one is focused on stormwater reduction, so they have different goals. There is the state revolving loan fund, which we often talk about for water and wastewater improvements, whether we want to go into that or not, to be determined. And then, of course, as we've mentioned a lot, and we're certainly waiting on a better definition of our opportunities would be through the federal infrastructure program. Again, you know, the the idea of trying to, you know, one option will be to, in those grants, is to try to tie in what we're doing here or may do here in Elgin to the statewide EV charging route. And again, so connectivity is always important for these grant programs, benefit is always important for these programs. So if you can somehow tie it in with some other benefit or some other group benefit, you definitely generally have a better opportunity than just to stand alone, we want to put in X number of stations. So that being said, we looked at at a charging station, the ChargePoint Station, it's just one of several that are out there. You can see some of the details, it's a fast charge Level 3, 250 miles of range per hour. So again, it's for people to come in, get a fast charge, be able to get back to wherever they need to be, not just a few miles. This particular model has two charging stations per unit, so two power modules per station. So Manager Kozel had mentioned standards for the number of stations, and the one we found most often is for this type of lot, 20% of the spaces would have EV charging access to them. So we have approximately 320 stalls in the city hall lot, so that works out to 64 charge points. Again, these are dual service stations, so we would need 32 charging stations. Right now, they're advertised for $52,000 each. So if we take that, it's approximately 1.6 million, plus I've worked in some costs for installation, electricity, supply upgrades. We know we have power in that area, there are transformers in that area, but we have not gone through the process with ComEd to do a detailed engineering analysis as to what we'd have to do to provide power to these stalls individually, but we've worked in some contingency for that. So if we look at the municipal parking lot overall program, again, plan Civic Center lot improvements, we developed three sustainable designs previously. If you might remember, the baseline project was simply a milliner surface, no sustainability in that, just our standard mill and overlay. retrofit one was a lower level of sustainable options, it had some pavers in it. retrofit two added more pavers and bio swales in the medians, again, so the bio swales tend to help on the pollution control benefits, the pavers tend to help on the stormwater reduction benefits, so they kind of work in concert, some of them have more appeal in one grant program over the other. And then the reconstruction option was the high-end option, that was a significant number of pavers and the bio swales. So you may remember, we we had a consensus to move forward to date on retrofit two, which was the intermediate level, so that was, some of the stalls will have pavers, there will be paver strips down the drive lanes to help pick up some of the stormwater, and it did include the bio swales. So just to give you some some idea on the scope, we've got two columns there. For all the options, the It's just as bad as getting the hook, right? When your when your screen goes blank. So you can see that the baseline option, we're looking at the total city cost, that's the total cost to us, if we were to get all the grants we think we're we would qualify for, and then the total city cost without grants, so that would be completely completely locally funded. So just jumping to retrofit two, the option that we've been pursuing the most, if we were to go with that sustainability option and the chargers as proposed, that would be $955,000 approximately. Without the grants, the total project cost is 2.85 million. And you can see the range of the other options, too. So and then at the bottom, and I've already mentioned these, but those are some of the grant funds we'll we'll be working, continuing to try to get. So I think what you'll see is, well, as I said, we'll continue looking at grants, trying to obtain those, we'll refine our designs, and at some time during next year's budget process, we'll have a more refined number for your consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Rauschenberg.
Yeah, just quickly, I know EV stations are new and there are not many around. I myself looked at driving from Elgin up to Lake Superior, and I can only get about a third of the way because there's no no EV stations, two-thirds of the way through Wisconsin. So I know it's a developing infrastructure. I also know it's kind of different from getting a tank of gas, which you drive up and spend like seven minutes, you know, putting your card in and getting gas. So if the thought of them in a municipal parking lot, you're thinking people are coming to work and plugging in, or they're coming down shopping and plugging in, I guess I I'm just not sure how people are utilizing these stations outside of their homes, for example.
I think it would be a variety of uses. We have a we have a charging station in the parking deck right next to the city hall right now. We know that there's one resident who comes there every day, tries to get there early, plugs in, leaves it there all day and charges his car. So you may
That was another question, how do you get people to move? Yeah.
So, you know, I think it could cover all those examples. It could be people who are maybe parking in the city lot and taking Metro somewhere else and they're charging their car all day. It could be people coming in for a festival or nightmare or some other event on a weekend who are only going to be here for a few hours or half a day, you know, it's
Or it could be someone, I mean, possibly someone driving in from Minneapolis and they have to stop before they get to Chicago and they see it on the the map, I don't know.
Right, and these maps are published for EV owners, they can find where stations are. And your example about getting to Michigan, that's, again, I mentioned earlier, the the federal program is focused on this this nationwide system, and that's exactly why.
Exactly.
The goal is to try to provide long routes across country, across states, that will allow people to make those trips. For me personally, when I think about EV and whether we go that route or not, I I think it helps to base it on, you know, what what type of amenities do you want to offer, right? We can wait for the demand to be there, or we can provide the opportunity and create demand.
Right, okay. The other question is, so I'm guessing someone uses their credit card when they plug in? And do, is there some revenue, some small amount of revenue that is generated toward the owner of this, like as a city-owned EV station?
Again, there are different options. You could provide completely free electricity if you chose to, that the city would pay for. Most or many stations that I'm aware of have credit card kiosks on them, and you pay a fee per hour or per kilowatt to charge, depending on the agreement. So if they're completely city-owned, the we could decide to, we're going to recover only the charge for the electricity, so it's a break even for us. We could charge the cost of the electricity plus a percentage for station maintenance. Again, there's many, many options. I I talked earlier about looking into possibly public-private partnerships. So there are companies that will come into your community, help you determine where good locations for EV stations are, and it's kind of a turnkey process. The city provides the physical sites, right? We own them, we give them permission to use them, they install the chargers, they maintain the chargers, they handle all the billing. A company like that, there is going to be some profit for them worked into a rate fee. You know, that's yard of negotiation, right? How much are we willing to to allow for profit? Do we want, so?
Just, okay, one more quick question. The two, I think we have two chargers in the the parking deck here?
I believe, I think one, but
Just one, okay.
Yeah.
One, okay, two ports. And is that is that free charge?
Mm-hmm. You know, I'm not sure.
I should remember this, I was here when we decided to put them in.
I recall, I recall that we were providing it for free, but then we had sponsors to help compensate because there was some concern that we were providing free electricity, even though it was a slow charger for others. I don't remember.
But, yeah, and our example there, that one person sort of takes advantage is something, I guess, you know, it's a thought process here, okay.
This is being presented now, it, I think, Mike, Mike recognized fact that this is an instance where we would potentially be driving the market. If we're looking at the downtown as being a potential destination, and there's a recognition that it's difficult for people to go everywhere they want with electric vehicles, if there's a recognition that you could come to downtown Elgin to take off your bike, good, take your bike off the rack, go down the path, or if you're traveling in Chicago and you're looking for an area that's relatively close to the expressway exit, you can stop there, do your charging for 20 or 30 minutes, get coffee in close proximity, all of those. In the time that we've been talking about this, I've had the benefit, I've got a kid who goes to school in Los Angeles, and paying attention to what, how it's working out there in Southern California, and there's a predominance of these charging stations that are located typically in the lots. In 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 not necessarily municipal lots, there's even some private paying lots. They're aggregated typically up at the top levels, so they 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 take advantage of people that are staying there for a longer amount of time, and it's not for the shoppers that are trying to get someplace closely. But the incidence of use, and I know that California is a much different market than ours, is there were, rented a car to see how easy it was to do those things, there was typically a wait for those. The people who have the electric cars, at least at this time, they learn to identify where those charging stations are, and their behavior will be modified to take advantage of what's there. Again, this is planned in 2024, but it's it's an amenity that isn't going to be generating additional increment. It's city property, we won't be driving any additional tax on it. I don't want to presume that there will be additional revenue in the TIF or that it will be expended. So the reason that this is being presented tonight as an option, with that $5 million that was originally recommended for supplemental payments to the pension, as we've been discussing options to use that, this $1 million to $3 million, some portion of that could be used from the general fund to begin to begin directing Mr. Pubins, Ms. Larson, to begin doing the additional work on these initiatives. But again, it's up to the council for that's for that determination. But this would be an instance where we're driving the market, and there's the belief that in this centralized location and the amenities that are around there, it is something that 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 will have sufficient demand. But that's, yeah, talking to the consultants as well.
And then you did note that since it's a city lot, when we have a few more electric vehicles owned by the city, the city could use the same vehicle, the same charging stations at night.
That that's the potential as well, too. Most of these charges, they will use a credit card or an app. If you, if you read within the industry, too, there are problems with charging stations, there's some of these vendors will like to say, if there's a screen, it will be smashed. And so they try to find ways so that they they drive you to use the cell or the cellphone or the mobile app amenity in order to avoid some of that. But I think what what Mike and Michaela have identified, it's probably not something that we want to get into the business of managing on a regular basis, so partnering with a third-party provider in which there's some, is in all likelihood going to be the route that we're going to go.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Mike at this time? Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'd be all for, if we wanted to partner with a private company and we provided real estate and they directed to say, hey, we think it's best in this lot or this lot, I'd be, I'd be even willing to go so far as to, you know, even fund some of the installation cost if they wanted to to then manage it. Not a ton of it, but, but I think that's that's what I would like to see, the maintenance and the care and feeding of it, the billing and the and the maintenance of those machines that I don't want the city to be involved in. And I think we, I think it is still free charging, I think, over in the center lot still, and so that I'd like to see us, you know, start to change some of those behaviors as well. If the website's still accurate, I should say that, it's based on, it is the web, you never know.
You weigh down this. Okay, Ms. Powell.
This is more for the manager regarding the Central Area TIF, and one of the things that we really haven't talked about much is economic development incentives in the area. I know you you talked a little bit about the fire sprinkler program that we have, but I think there's an opportunity for us to go a little bit further, with us being very specific and having a clear, clearly defined, some some other clearly defined programs that business owners and potential business owners would be able to access, you know, a certain pool of money to help fund different projects for building rehabilitation. We mentioned facade improvements, because right now on our website, the only thing that shows up is the the fire sprinkler program. I think we need to be really intentional about how we lay that out and and even adding some more programs besides that. There's There's, um, as I've mentioned before, a lot of times, uh, my day job, I go to other municipalities. So not only do I get to go to our city council meetings, I get to go to other people's city council meetings. Elmhurst has a really, um, detailed and some really interesting incentives that they have provided with their TIF for businesses. Some are around retail grants for build-out and marketing. There's another one for facades. There's one, um, that's more general that allows people to tap grants, grant funding maybe up to $10,000 or $15,000 for land acquisition, site prep, um, build-out, architectural work, things like that. And I would like for us to really, um, before the expiration of our TIF, I would really like to see us build in some specific programs like that, not only to help, um, existing businesses, but help us in attracting additional businesses, not only to our downtown TIF area, but obviously our central area TIF extends beyond the downtown. So I would like to, um, ask staff to bring back some of those options and, you know, probably put, put aside maybe a good chunk of money, a couple hundred thousand dollars, $500,000 towards some of those programs, um, for businesses in the central area TIF.
Well, we've had programs like that in the past and you probably recall that, and they were abandoned after there was a lack of subscription with those. Without knowing what the potentials are going back and doing that analysis, I wouldn't be comfortable recommending an amount right now, but knowing at least within the plan, as it's being presented right now, there's $4.7 million in unallocated revenue within the next three years. I think we can go back and begin conducting that analysis after the adoption of the budget and then begin presenting potential programs to the council at that time. All, it's not something that needs to be resolved by the end of the year, but I, I understand what you're saying. But instead of just committing something there, just go out and figure out what's going on. Particularly, you're saying facade improvements that wouldn't be limited to historic buildings, I take it?
Correct.
Yeah. And typically, that is what we have focused on in the past. Not exclusively, there were other instances where we did consider that. So we'll have to go back and try to identify meaningful standards so that we know that we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck when we're making those investments in the businesses. But we can do that.
Yeah, and I think really the thing that I'm, you know, in, in my mind, obviously, these are improvements that stay with that property for the most part. So even if that business eventually grows out of that area, decides to move, it's still a benefit for whoever moves back in, you know, who, who moves, someone who moves into that properly, property later on, which is the whole idea of the TIF, which is to build up the, the permanent infrastructure in those areas. I just think we, we, we just got to get a little bit more creative and, and I know some of those things maybe didn't go well in the past, but, you know, we're in a different climate now and, um, you know, different businesses are starting to look at us. We're trying to attract cannabis businesses, we're trying to attract grocery stores to downtown, what have you. It, it may be time for us to, um, bring some of those back or, or look at tweaking them in a way that is going to, um, be not only beneficial, like I said, to current businesses, but potentially attract some new businesses to our community.
We'd be remiss, though, if we didn't recognize the ability of Mark Malott and his staff to, to craft together some substantial rehabilitation projects in the absence of anything to find. We see the benefit of what happened with, uh, with the rehabilitation of the Kenee Sporting Goods, the form of that, what we've seen at the Gost House, we've helped out the hate with the improvements that they have over there. And while it doesn't seem like a traditional rehab within the downtown, we're going to be seeing work from Judson University on the old PNC Bank building, something that didn't necessarily fit in those more traditional areas. And I, I, again, I just, it's important to point those creative use of the TIF funds as showing the development that's been able to occur as a result of that, and more importantly, bring more people living into the downtown. So, but we can come back with more information from now.
Oh, yeah, and, and those are great examples and, and definitely applaud staff for their work on those. But I'm, I'm just kind of looking for something, you know, a, a, a lot of us are night owls and, and folks, you know, a lot of times, if you're, if you're looking to relocate to a community, you're, first place a lot of times you go is the website. So if you go, if you're up searching at 1:00 in the morning, Mark's obviously not available, Mike Pubens might be, but-
Malott's up, too. He's up, too.
Mark's up, too. But, you know, just having something as simple, being able to go to a website and see, oh, these are some of the things that are available. Obviously, those aren't the only things that are available, but at, at least that's the carrot to help draw people in.
Sure.
And, and they know that there's something specific there. And those are really kind of larger projects that you mentioned. These are probably something a little bit smaller that may be more doable for, for some business owners. You start talking about $100,000 or, or what have you. Some folks may not be at that point that they would be able to finesse, uh, you know, something like that. But, hey, there's $10,000 available for me to do X, Y, and Z? That, that sounds doable and workable to me. And who knows? Once they make that application and, and talk to, um, our team, it may become obvious that, hey, well, really, you really have more like of, the opportunity to maybe leverage more money. Maybe it's $50,000 you can get, because once we've talked to you, you know, we find that you, you know, are really looking to do a whole lot more. But a, again, just having something out there to let folks know that we're open for business and, and have that money available for, for folks to use is what I'm looking for.
Okay.
That's all I had, because we're talking about-
Anything else for the manager, Mr. Pubens?
Thanks, Mike. Ready to talk utility fund? Or do, would you like to take a break, Mayor? Is there any interest? I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to run the meeting, I just, uh-
Okay, I'm trying to look at the schedule. We have, uh, three people signed up for comments. We have very little on the agenda at 7:00. So let's go, how long will it take us to go through the, uh, the next few minutes if?
So we're good to go for 7:00 if you are, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, and we'll take a short break right at 7:00 and then we'll get back to the, uh, regular council meeting. Work for everybody?
Dead Nirocky on the utilities fund with support with Eric Wees.
No. No. Just, good try, just a few minutes before 7:00.
No problem. Okay, um, before we jump into the utility fund, I want to make you aware of a change that we made to the utility fund budget since your budget books were prepared. Before the meeting tonight, I laid, um, a revised utility fund, uh, financial plan chart on your desk, um, which would replace, um, the chart on page 61 in the budget book. Since the time that the proposed budget was prepared, we've incurred significant expenditures for emergency lead service line replacements. We determined that additional funding was required in the budget to provide for these repairs. We felt it would be prudent to incorporate this change in the budget at this time as opposed to relying on contingency or reserve funds next year. The change increases capital outlay by $300,000 and there are no other changes to the, uh, financial plan as proposed in your budget book. Okay, I want to start out by, um, looking at the utility fund for 2022 with a comparison of the budget to where we estimate to end the year. Starting at the top with revenues, the budget provided for $32.4 million in revenues and we're estimating $35.3 million, about 2.9 million more than planned. If you look at the very top line, the charges for services, which represent sewer revenues, is about $200,000 under budget. And the sale of commodities, which represents water revenues, is about $1.1 million under budget. When we prepared the budget for 2022, we were coming off a very high water usage year in '21, and we have not seen that occur in 2022. According to Eric Wees, through August of 2022, we had pumped 11% less water than we did in the prior year, which means that we're billing for less water and thus the revenue's coming down. And the sewer revenue would also come down because the, it is tied to your water usage. While these things are under budget, the 2022 estimate includes $4 million for the IEP A forgivable loan that we received, um, to do lead service line replacements. Looking down at expenditures, we budgeted $34.9 million and we're estimating about $41.1 million, about $6.3 million over budget. Earnings and benefits are coming in right at the budgeted level. Our commodities, um, and supplies expenditures are a couple hundred thousand dollars under budget as, um, we haven't purchased as many water meters as the, uh, plan called for. The contractual services expenditures were budgeted at $7 million and they're estimated to be about $10 million or $3 million over budget. And this comes from a couple of, um, areas. Number one would be about $1.3 million of that increase is, comes from the contract for the disposal of the water treatment lime residuals. In 2021, we had no expense for this service. If you will, um, recall, the vendor we had at the time couldn't provide the service. The contract was canceled, an RFP was issued and another vendor was selected, but through that process, we weren't able to dispose of any of those materials in 2021. So in 2022, we're making up for that and have more than an annual expense for that service. In addition, engineering expenditures are about $1.1 million of that, uh, increase. And over half of that is related to engineering services agreements that were, um, estimated in 2021 but carried over into 2022. And about $500,000 is for the engineering services related to the IEP A loan and the lead service line replacements and is covered by, um, a portion of that $4 million loan. In addition to those two major items, um, the utility fund, like, like all our other funds, has seen increases in prices in contractual services, commodities, and utilities. Capital outlay is estimated to be 5.5 million or about $3.4 million over budget, and that is entirely related to the, um, lead service line replacements under the IEP A loan and covered by those, uh, loan funds. So when you look where we anticipate to end of the year, we plan to draw on, um, cash reserves in about $2.5 million and we're estimating to draw on those cash reserves in, at a total of $5.8 million, which is about $3.3 million unfavorable to budget. But as I had just indicated, you know, a lot of the expenditures that are over budget are covered by that loan and the other ones are carryovers from last year. And when we look back at, uh, 2021, we were $3.2 million favorable to our estimate. So the two years offset each other. Moving on to the 2023 budget and the five-year financial plan. The top-line charges for service against, again, reflects sewer revenues, which are projected to be $6.2 million in the 2023 budget. This is, um, there's no rate increase plan for sewer in 2023 or throughout the financial plan. So you see those revenues consistent through the five-years plan. Sale of commodities, which is water revenues, are budgeted to be $26.1 million in '23. This incorporates a 5% water rate increase in 2023. In the next four years of the plan, we see water rates range from 4% to 9% per year. And as you know, each year as we prepare our plan, we will, that would be reevaluated and depending on water revenues, if, if we're producing more water and generating more revenue, perhaps the rates will come down, or if expenditures are less than we anticipated. But again, each year that's reevaluated. Okay, so the 2023 budget plans for the $32.5 million in revenue and $36.2 million in expenditures. The earnings and benefits category for 2023 is $10.5 million, about a 3.6% increase over the current year. This budget incorporates a 3% cost of living adjustment, adds an electrical worker position, and upgrades a part-time lab position to full-time. Those incremental, um, costs are partially offset by a reduction in the city's required contribution to IMRF and reduced work comp rates. Our commodities and supplies for 2023 at $3.5 million is about 14% greater than this year, and that is due to the increases that we're seeing in chemical costs and the return of the full, uh, water meter budget. Contractual services at $6.8 million are 33% less than this year. And that is because the, uh, contract for the removal of the, uh, lime residuals returns to an annual allotment and removes the, um, IEP A engineering that we saw this year. Our capital expenditures, operating capital expenditures in this budget are $2.2 million, which is 59% less than the current year, again, entirely related to the, um, IEP A program with the lead service lines. So in, uh, 2023, we plan that expenditures would exceed revenues by $3.7 million, drawing on cash reserves, but leaving us above our, our target of 25% of annual expenditures. Throughout the remainder of the plan, um, earnings and benefits increase 4% per year, plus in 2024, we've included the addition of a water distribution crew. All other expense items increased 3% per year. By the end of the financial plan, we've drawn, um, $15 million off of cash reserves, but we're still at $9.6 million or 25% of annual expenditures, which is our target. This last chart, um, provides the strategic initiatives planned by the utility fund over the next five years. And, um, these initiatives are generally funded by general obligation bonds, the use of some impact fees, and, um, capital improvement funds for combined sewer separation. In 2023, we plan to issue $7.8 million in general obligation debt. And a, as we're all aware, we're in a, um, very high interest rate market right now. And if we look back at the debt that we issued in 2022, our true interest cost was 2.6%. And our Spear Financial, our consultants for our bond issues, have indicated that for like municipalities to Elgin, right now they're seeing 4.5% to 5%, which is back to the rates that municipal issuers saw in 2008. So we can expect that we're going to pay more for our, our money in this next year. And the financial plan does incorporate, um, a 4% rate on the new debt. I do, um, plan to work with Spear and also with Eric Wees and determine the best time to issue the debt with the hope that maybe if we can get a little further in the year, we'll see the rates come down a little bit. We had, you know, we generally do it in April, but- But you know, we have to balance that with the timing of Eric's projects and when he needs to have the money available. But we're definitely going to keep an eye on that and try to determine the best time to go to market. So, questions?
Questions for Ms. Naraki. Mr. Shaw?
Instead of bonding, could some of that just be borrowed from the general fund? Because our general fund, I guess like in our three-year plan, the first year or so has a pretty strong balance in our reserves in the general fund. Is it possible to steal from Peter to pay Paul and then swap it back if the bonds are, pricing is still high?
I guess that could be an option for that $5 million because the general fund reserves throughout that plan are utilized. And we get down to the bottom at the third year.
It's not a sustainable piece, I get that. But I'm just saying, for once in a while, when you have the conditions right with our financial plan and rates are not favorable, is that an option?
Possibly.
Here's, the other question I had is, it's not specifically covered in the utility plan itself, but it's more around the payment for services. I'm still very curious always why we don't get more people to do auto pay on their water bills and the impact that has to our services of taking payments manually here at City Hall. I noticed that we do, under certain fees, under like the development side, we charge a fee if people use their credit card.
Right.
And so I guess I'm curious, on the water bill side, are there options where we would do something similar on a couple of different fronts? Where, you know, if you pay with a, pay with a check or if you pay with a debit card, you get one fee. But if you do pay with a credit card, you get charged a fee. And then you also possibly have some sort of a discount if you sign up for recurring payments to give people an incentive to not come in every month or to set up that type of a thing. Would that be something that would have some sort of a staff impact long-term? I guess I'd like to move us in that direction at least, from a policy perspective and a fee perspective.
In the time I've been here, we've never considered credit card charges for water bill payments. In the fees proposal for next year, we are adding credit card fees for large permits and that kind of thing. When you're getting permits for $50,000, that's a large credit card fee. But we haven't looked at it for the water bills. And you know, with the implementation of the portal and that, we're really encouraging people to pay that way. So I don't know if we want to charge them a fee for that. Because there is a benefit and the more automated we get and the more people that take advantage of those things down the road, we could hopefully look at less staffing in the customer service area.
Totally agree. I guess maybe it's an evolution then.
Right.
That I've seen many companies and possibly even the one that I work for, where we try to encourage first the auto payment piece. And then, once you get to the auto payment piece, then how do you encourage people to utilize the checking account piece or the debit card piece to remove some of the fees that you do pay to some of the credit card companies? I mean, holistically, I mean, there's quite a bit of money that, I don't know the numbers on how much, you know, is coming through on the credit card side, but those fees sometimes can be quite substantial. And so I just was curious to see if that's something that we should be looking at as a citywide to just recoup some of those costs. I know it's the state of Illinois, that's something that I've seen that they do. At least Illinois, if you go online to pay for your license plate renewal. So I know it's not unheard of from a governmental perspective to do something like that.
Right, something we could look at.
Any further questions from Ms. Naraki? I think Mr. Shaw raises an excellent point about loaning ourselves money out of the general fund. And you're talking about buying a little time next year to see if rates come down. That might be something that would be very practical for us to do and pay ourselves back when the bond is issued, maybe six or nine months after April. So just a thought.
Take a look at that.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Powell?
Quick question. I know in the past, when we've compared our water rates to some of our comparables around the area, we fared very well. Any idea where we stand right now in terms of looking at where our water rates are compared to some other communities around us?
We haven't done that analysis yet this year, but we could do that and bring it back if you would like.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move and second to adjourn. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, committee of hold is adjourned. We'll take a 15-minute biological break and be back at 7:10 for the regular city council meeting.
Now let's find our seats, please. Yeah. We'll call the regular city council meeting for the City of Elgin for November 16th, 2022 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Brashenberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan? Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here.
Approval of the amendments of the previous meeting of November 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero. We have no communications this evening. We have three people that have signed up that wish to make a public comment. First person to sign up is David Gerina.
My name is David Gerina, and I serve on the Sustainability Commission. I was appointed about a year ago. And one of the things that had come up in our meetings was whether or not volunteerism. When I came onto the commission, I was looking for some work groups, and unfortunately there weren't any at the time. So the discussion came up that we would start some work groups. And so we started, you know, building efficiency. We started a transportation and mobility. We started zero waste. We started, you know, just like outreach and education. But currently, we've been meeting for about about six months now, and we've had no volunteers. So it's a crisis in volunteerism, is what I'm speaking to here today. When I looked at our article under Sustainability Commission, it says that we're supposed to have nine members. We've been operating right now at eight members for about five months. So we don't, we can't even fill our commission right now. The other problem that we're having is now we have these work groups. And if you look at the article, you go to the end of the article, and it says "One of our duties and powers or responsibilities is to recruit and maintain a list of volunteers willing to lend their time and effort in implementing the recommendations found within the city's sustainability action plan." And then F says "to coordinate the use of volunteers when appropriate to assist in implementing the projects approved by the Sustainability Commission and the City Council." And so what I'm hoping to do is, this year, we have a little bit of extra money that we haven't allocated for anything. We have about $9,000, about $9,700, about $1,600 in escrow. So the idea was that we would issue an RFP. We would ask for a volunteer recruiter to help us with filling out our work group commission or under our commission, our work groups. The problem is, is so far that hasn't been issued. We gave instruction to staff to have that issued. It hasn't, hasn't been issued yet. So we're running, we're running out of time. And what I'm hoping to do is get some RFP information back to find out what this might cost. Because we don't know what a volunteer recruiter would cost. I've talked to some of the nonprofits. I asked them, how do you get volunteer recruit, you know? They said, this is how we do it. We have a volunteer recruiter. We employ them. We get, we get volunteers, and this is how we compete in the market of volunteers. So we're right now at an impasse because we have, you know, we've gone out to the farmer's market, and we've, you know, put, we've had our own booth. We've talked to the public. We've signed people up. We've used our own networks to try to get people to volunteer. Thus far, in our work groups, it's just commissioners. We've had two volunteers come over the past six months. And of those two, only one has stayed. So what we're hoping is, is that a volunteer recruiter would help us in reaching out into the city in general, to tap maybe into businesses, tap maybe into like-minded partnerships of maybe, you know, like, education and healthcare and, you know, just, you know, whatever infrastructure that we're concerned about, if it's utilities or whatever, if we could tap into those people to get some volunteerism in our work groups to be more effective. We've got a lot of ideas. We just don't have the human capital to act on them. And so right now, that's kind of where we're at. I'm hoping if this, if this RFP doesn't get issued, we have one more meeting for this year. That money is going to go unused. And what I'm hoping for is if we could carry that over to next year's budget or have an additional $10,000 added to our budget. You know, we're currently had our budget meeting. We allocated our full $24,000 at the budget meeting. So we're, you know, we're sort of at a point where if we wanted to do some volunteer recruitment, we wouldn't have the budget for it for next year. So anyway, that's, that's where, that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. We'll direct it back to the manager and the staff to have a discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Dave Amerson?
Good evening. I have a handout if you're permitting.
Please give it to the clerk.
Good evening. My name is David Amerson. I'm a staff attorney for the Police Benevolent and Protective Association of Illinois. Currently represent a number of police unions in the state of Illinois and public sector civilian unions, including the Elgin Police Benevolent and Protective Association, Unit 54, which represents 150 sworn police officers within the city of Elgin. On November 14th, 2022, the Elgin Police Benevolent and Protective Association released a formal letter expressing a vote of no confidence in Chief Anna Lally and her command staff comprised of Deputy Chief Adam Schusler, Commander Kevin Senney, Commander David Lesko, and Commander Stephen Bianchi. Of the 150 total members, only 25 officers of our 150-member unit voted that they have confidence in the chief. I'm here to provide some supporting substance for this issue. When I first started working with the Elgin police officers a few months ago, the first thing I did was put out a survey to get a sense of what the issues were. In most units I serve, the main problems are what you'd imagine: wages, working hours, vacation days, and so on. Here in Elgin, a pattern emerged of something else. A wide majority of members were responding with issues that seemed to stem directly from command strategy and decisions. This led to another more focused survey about these issues, along with a no-confidence vote, the results of which I'd like to review with you, time permitting. So going through the survey results, to the question of "Do you have confidence in the leadership ability of the Chief of Police of the Elgin Police Department?" 65.2% of the members responded "No." Do you have confidence in the leadership ability of the command staff of the Elgin Police Department? 71.5% responded "No." Conversely, do you have confidence in the leadership ability of the frontline supervisors, sergeants and lieutenants of the Elgin Police Department? 67.7% responded "Yes." Getting deeper into the survey results, to the question "In the past three years, has your work tempo or workload gone up?" 83.5% responded "Yes." Do you feel command strategy has a positive or negative impact on morale? 85.8% responded "Negative." Do you feel command strategy has a positive or negative impact on effectiveness and efficiency? 80.3% responded "Negative." Do you think discipline is handled fairly by the Elgin Police Department? 82.7% responded "No." And to the question "What entity do you most attribute to the conditions facing patrol officers," a question only asked of patrol officers, 67.1% listed "Command." Next, we have a section on "Agree and Disagree," where the options. Shift hours are a major source of stress and/or frustration. 67.9% of the respondents agreed with this. Deployment of patrol, such as who, what, when, where, and to what officers are assigned, is a major source of stress and/or frustration. 81.7% agreed. Work conditions, this is all respondents, not just patrol. When asked the question, I feel, or when presented with a statement, "I feel supported by command," 71.7% disagreed. "I feel supported by frontline supervisors, sergeants and lieutenants," 70.9% agreed. "I feel safe or unthreatened in bringing concerns to command," 66.1% disagreed. This also provides context for the abstentions in the no-confidence vote, to which there was about 20, as well as several members approaching us, saying that they were fearful that participating in the vote would lead to retaliation. To the question, "I would recommend Elgin Police Department to potential recruits or lateral hires," sorry, only 63%, or 63% disagreed. Improving conditions at the Elgin Police Department is within command's control? 93.7% agreed. Command strategy makes me feel more safe on the job? 77.2% disagreed. So the last thing I want to say is, the Elgin Police Benevolent and Protective Association, Unit 54, sincerely hopes that the Elgin City Council, the city manager, the chief, and her command staff will take these results and the concerns of the membership seriously and respond in kind to work with the membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Banner? Mr. Shaw? Yeah, but it's not a debate here, so that's...
Just had a question.
Okay.
Just had a question for you, sir, on the results. You said there was 150 members within the union?
We have 150 members. 130 responded to the no-confidence vote.
And then of the, and then how were the 20 that did not respond? How were they categorized as?
As abstentions.
As abstentions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Marcus Banner, the People's Champ, and I come to you as one, one people, one voice, one community. So I hear our officers are outraged at our chief for holding a married officer accountable for sleeping with another man's wife while he is on the clock, but not at what he did. If we can get that same energy from all of those officers in the union and simply put it toward, that outraged energy toward the officers who are abusing their power and start holding them accountable, then we would be able to bring back honor to our department. I'm here today to present evidence to our council that Lieutenant Jensen, the Cynthia Clements murderer, has been terrorizing the civilians working under him, especially women of color, with the special emphasis on black women, as well as quarterbacking to the so-called independent investigating firm, causing employees to resign or take FMLA because they are horrified at what he might do next. He's so bold with his threats that he does it through emails as if he's untouchable. I know most of the department has knowledge of this abuse, and yet not one of our officers have come before this council outraged. We need that same energy when it comes to protecting our citizens from officers abusing their power. I present this evidence to our council in hopes that a full investigation will be done and done publicly in the name of transparency, so that all employees can be heard and protected from retribution. This investigation should be carried out by our council personally, with the purpose of not hiding our dirty laundry, but taking it out for cleansing, so we can stop pretending to be a great, transparent, accountable, inclusive city and actually be that great city. In my experience dealing with our chief, she holds the blue line 95% of the time in order to protect her officers from downfall and the institution from embarrassment. And even though we disagree more often than not, under her administration, the community has felt a small sense of accountability and less harassment, which has yielded impactful results. She has made strides, no matter how small I may feel they are, in the right direction. And for that, myself and the community still have confidence in her. Change is a very uncomfortable process, even more so for a group of people who have always operated with unchallenged power. When you are the bridge between two different worlds, and one side or the other is elated with you, you are most definitely not doing your job. In other words, both sides should be disappointed with you about something. That's the beauty of balance. I leave you, as I always come, as one people, one voice, one community. Thank you.
Thank you. It brings us to bids. We have none. We have one other item of business tonight. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a fourth amendment to the commercial property lease agreement with 164 Division, limited liability corporation for the Elgin Art Showcase. This item must be removed from the table. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second to remove from the table. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero. That brings us to the original resolution.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero. Consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero. Miscellaneous business?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved, eight zero. The next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, at 5:00 PM in the City Council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. I entertain a motion to adjourn back to the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn back to the committee of the whole. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. Entertain a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to reconvene. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Brashenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we're back in business. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As a final segment of the presentation on the utility fund, want to share some information with the public as it relates to the city's continuing initiatives and the lead service line replacement program. We've talked about how we know that we have a total of $8 million in funding from the IPA for the removal of the lead-based service lines, 13.3... Thirteen point three million dollars of the city's ARPA funds are also being dedicated for that removal. Later in the agenda today, we're going to be talking about some reimbursements that we're making to people who made corrections on their properties at the recommendation of the city while we took action in advance of state legislation that has followed the initiatives that we put into place a number of years ago. Aaron Cosentino is here to introduce the members of the GIS team that are in the process of creating an interactive map that will enable people in the city to determine with some degree of certainty the probability, there they are, of whether they have lead-based service lines in their property. Mr. Cosentino, would you like to introduce your team? Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. I am proud to introduce tonight two members, the two, two of our lead members of our GIS team. These two, along with Steve Demoleras, are primarily responsible for our GIS initiatives throughout the city. We have with us Chris Narot and Rich Snyder. These folks are the unsung heroes of our data. They're, they are on a day-in and day-out basis, doing both the field work that's necessary along with our utilities teams that Mr. Wees oversees down to the utilities from sewer and water, helping us map our physical assets and transferring them into our digital world, so that we can quickly and efficiently stand up something that we're going to demonstrate, that they'll demonstrate for you this evening. And what we're seeing is this confluence of data being mixed with these public health outcomes. We saw it with COVID and the transparency dashboard that we put up to track COVID, to allow businesses to show when they were open. That was all very much on the shoulders of these gentlemen. So, the city and the community owes them quite a bit of accolades for the work that they do day in and day out, and I'm just proud to introduce them tonight to show you what they have put together to help show our public and help our public explore this public health issue that is lead service lines. We have, yes, and you know what? I'll just let them take it, and they'll introduce what they've built for us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that glowing introduction. So we've worked to take all of the data and build a web application. Right now, we have it, so you can be viewed on desktop or mobile. It's been optimized for that as well. We tried to keep it concise but informative. So we basically built it to scroll down, that way it helps facilitate the mobile users as well. So as you go through, there's a headers where you can navigate through all of the sections without scrolling, if you choose to. I'll just be brief. Section about the city's water lines, what goes through them, what they're constructed of, and a little bit of the history of that is tied into that paragraph there. For the more dynamic data results here on the page, I'll refer to Chris.
Thank you again, Aaron, for that. So this is really drilling in, down into the data of what's on our information systems. So currently, we have thirty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven addressed, addresses with meters, twenty thousand seven hundred sixty-three lead-free overall service lines, five hundred sixteen public-side lead-free service lines, one thousand six hundred twenty-eight unknown, and ten thousand nine hundred seventy that are represented as lead. The percentages of those for lead-free, sixty-one percent. Public-side lead-free, two percent. Unknown, five percent. And lead, thirty-two percent. Each of these categories are broken down by certain criteria. So lead-free is confirmed, public and private-side, copper or ductile iron. For public-side lead-free, it's confirmed that the public side is ductile iron or copper, and the private side is unknown or lead. Unknown is, the public side is unknown, or both the public side and private side are unknown. And for lead, the public side is lead, or both public and private are lead. So we also have a map for the public to interact with, to drill down into the data in more detail. So, actually pull that up here. So this allows residents or whoever to search for the water service line material based on a certain address. So for, for example, if I click one of these, you see this certain address is lead on the private and public side, and the overall composition is lead as well. And that corresponds to the colors that I showed before. An example of public-side lead-free is here. So the public side is confirmed copper, and the private side is lead. So therefore, only the public side is lead-free. And then for an example of unknown, the public side is unknown, but the private side is copper. Therefore, it's still unknown that the overall composition is lead-free, lead, or public side. And then finally, here in this example of lead-free, because both sides are copper. And I didn't go over this in detail, but there's also a description of everything I just went over when I was displaying the indicators with the actual values. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Rich.
I'd actually like to add, for that, for both the graphs and the map, that's dynamic as our city crews go out and verify, as soon as they hit enter, was it? Once a day, correct? Once a day, we run a script that updates these maps. So in perpetuity, they will continually update as the changes occur. That's a technical challenge we're glad to overcome. That was fun. So this rounding down towards the bottom half of the app, basically wanted to give some information, some education about what the basic service line is, because realistically, most people don't really realize everything that's right in front of their house. We tried to make it clear and concise, and not too overwhelming. We were able to actually get a couple photographs of what a lead service line in your house, so you could go downstairs and look and start to get an idea of what's actually involved. That one was lead, and this one is led with, replaced with copper. And then the city has a pretty comprehensive website, pages dedicated to information about lead in the city water, it's actually not in the water, it's in the pipes. But we do want to touch on a few things that are very important, like reducing risk of, there's several options here that just by going to this one site, you could see it implicate, or start using it right away. And then, as I said, we have several pages of information. This link right here brings it straight to that city website. We also have it, so you can view the, the, this site in Spanish as well. And I, my favorite part of it, without doubt, is the, these charts. Because as, as the data is changing, citizens will be able to see on a daily basis as we're doing our best to upgrade all the city's system. And I think that pretty much covers what we wanted to cover. This will be live, public tomorrow morning. We'll flip the switch. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, and one final comment. The overall slide that city manager Kozel had on the screen presents that very broad-level view. So those dark gray to black dots, those are lead. There's lead contained within those service lines. Obviously, the green, purple, lead-free, well, purple is half-lead-free essentially. And then the orange is unknown. So it gives you the scope and the severity of the issue that we're working towards and the massive undertaking monetarily, labor-wise, and data-wise that, that the city has to, has to undertake to tackle this issue. So, thank you. And with that, we can answer any questions, or Director Wees is here as well.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Dixon?
Yes, I'll kick it off, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Great job with the site, I think that's very informative. That's going to probably save a lot of us a lot of time, because we get calls and emails about this, you know, all the time. And prior to you taking over IT, you know, you were the person I directed everything to, so I, you know, probably overwhelmed you with some of these questions.
That's why I'm here.
And, you know, with that being said, looking at that, that larger map that you just had up there, can you talk about the, the path of completion as far as where we're starting at inside of the city and the direction that we're moving? Because there are residents who are like, why not me write right now? Right? So I think that's a very basic question, fundamental, to, and I think that we can fundamentally, fundamentally address that in, in those people's concerns. So, Mr. Wees?
Yeah, thanks for the question. And thanks to this group, the, the information, presenting the data is just phenomenal. We're, we're very thankful for, for their help and assistance in, in being able to present this data this way. So maybe what I'll highlight first is, the city had acquired essentially a grant of $4 million from the IPA, principal forgiven loan, $4 million. And where we're spending this money this year, you'll actually see kind of right in the middle of a, in the, is my arrow work here? Yeah, there we go. This, this kind of F lane on its side is actually the Lord Street Combined Sewer Separation, Phase Five and Six. And then you'll, as we move over to the right here, you see the Bluff City Combined Sewer Separation areas, where, where we have utilized this funding, and you're actually seeing the, 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 the map improving or showing those areas with now copper services. So these are services that were disturbed with capital improvement projects over the past three or four years, 2018 to, to 2021, essentially, where we have utilized this funding to, to replace lead services with copper, full, full copper service replacements in those locations. So you're asking, going forward, where is the plan? Next year, we're going to be spending a significant portion of that thirteen and a half million dollars, or thirteen point four million dollars in ARPA funding. We're, we're working on getting another $4 million. So within the, the state, Illinois State Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act, there are, there are specific recommendations that, that a utility follow after or strive to, to replace services in low to moderate income locations. So we've actually selected our plan based on the city's lowest census tract areas is where we're, where we're essentially focusing our funding next year. And I don't have a real good map here tonight to demonstrate that, but, but essentially, it's at Jefferson. I want to say I'm pretty, I've got to be pretty close here with where Jefferson is, maybe it's a, little, little, little bit south, little bit south of that is, is the northern line of the, the lowest census tract, and we're going to be moving south from there. We are going to incorporate the entire street. We're, we're not just going to do one side of a street, we're going to do both sides of the streets, but essentially, we're going to be starting there and moving south. There are a couple other small areas of, of low census tract where we'll all, we'll also be hitting in this first year. One of those is just across the river at National and Hendy area. But, but then, we're going to just continue moving from, the, the vast majority of the, of the replacements are going to, to continue moving south from that, from that Jefferson area where, where we're starting. One other thing that, that I do want to highlight, we've been working with the, the Public Works Department on resurfacing locations, and, and so we're, we're going to incorporate where they're doing resurfacing projects in 2023. We're, we're anticipating getting in and doing lead service line replacements in those locations as well. As in the majority of these, the, the black dot locations, you're, you're going to see a full lead service line replacement, which is going to go out into the street and do some disturbance and have a, have a trench that's going to have, end up having an asphalt repair patch. And so we're, we're going to want to coordinate with the, the Public Works Department for resurfacing, so that they're coming through afterwards and resurfacing and minimizing the, the number of times where we're creating trenches that, that are then going to be there for a fif, a new fifteen-year roadway. So I hope that explains it to you, what, what, what our approach is to this.
Yeah, no, it does, thank you. And, and I just wanted the, the public to have that information, because when you look at that map, it's daunting. We're not going to be able to complete this overnight. We're talking about years, right? And we're talking about more money than we can possibly get our hands on at one time. So we're just going to chip away at it, essentially, right? And it's, I think it's, you know, I think I should also point out, which is, I think, a very important point that you made, which is, if we are doing work on a street and we disturb the lines, your, your lead lines will be replaced if we are disturbing those lines, even if it's not, you know, per the schedule as far as what, what should be happening. That is still happening, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely, so.
You kind of was looking at me like, oh, no, don't say, don't say that.
Sorry, no, absolutely, that, that is the plan. So, for example, this year, Bluff City Combined Sewer Separation, Phase Three, we are replacing all of the disturbed lead service lines all the way into the home. That, that is a requirement of that act that I, that I mentioned earlier, that, that if we disturb it, within thirty days, the utility is, is required to replace that lead service line all the way into the meter location. And, and yeah, we will continue with that. Next year, we're not going to have a combined sewer separation project, as we've doubled up in, in this year to, to complete the Bluff City basin. But that being said, going forward, as we do water main replacement projects and combined sewer separation projects, when we excavate and disturb a lead service line, the requirement is on the city for us to, to replace that service line from the main to the meter.
Okay. And for those homes that lines aren't being disturbed, and it's going to be a while before we get to them, we were also providing them with water filters, two at one point in time, are we still continuing that as well?
So we do the water filters when there's a disturbance. So the duration of a, of a contract or a construction, capital improvement construction project generally goes for, for many months before the water main is replaced or the, the service line is, is replaced coming into the home. So in order to mitigate any, any potential hazards to the, to the homes that, that are impacted by this, we issue water filters for the duration of that, that construction project and, and replacement filter cartridges. So, so yes, we, we still do it in those instances, but, but that's currently how we decide where, where filter distribution occurs.
Okay. And, and while you're up here, just allow me to thank you for working on one of the items that we're going to have here before us, which is reimbursing some of the homeowners who were able to proactively pay for some of their own lead replacement. I think that's, that was wonderful. And we had a specific case that I called you about, which was months ago, and you let me know that this was coming down the pipeline, so, pipeline. So I'm really happy to see that come forward here. I really appreciate all of your work and diligence on this issue. And so, and thank you too, Aaron. I, I don't need to call you as much anymore, but maybe I'll find something. All right, thank you.
Mr. Thorne?
Thank you. And thanks, Eric, for the good work and your team. I, I think this was touched on, but the fact that you're doing, you referenced that if you're doing asphalt work on that street, that to help alleviate or eliminate extra timing, you're going to do the service work at the same time for the pipes. But if there's a situation where there is construction project or something that goes on that's going to cause a issue in some neighborhood or some particular street that's not scheduled, I would wonder if there's a, a way you could address that to say, well, we better add this street on, because we've, I guess we're overusing the word disturbed, but we've learned that a lot of times, these are sleeping giants. And my house has had water, water service for over a hundred years, so I certainly know they're all lead, but, but I seem healthy, at least in my opinion. So I'm not concerned, but if all of a sudden, there's a lot of work outside, and then I start seeing my water get brown, I'd be concerned. So if there's a construction project of- So if there's construction project of some level or they're doing something that maybe isn't an actual street resurfacing, it might be worthy to say, oh, we better check that. It's just, maybe I'm diving too deep, but that's where it's going to dislodge some of the coatings and it could create a problem from the reports that we've been given prior.
Sure. So for clarification, what we, how we define a disturbance is actual excavation and shaking that service line. I understand that there could be some sort of, I mean, even in the act of resurfacing a roadway, they run a vibratory compactor over the top of it, and that vibration could create some disturbances. But currently, how we define it is an excavation that actually is jarring that service. So just to be clear on how we're defining it. That being said, yeah, we're definitely working with Mike's group in Public Works on trying to do this as efficiently as possible and not cutting trenches into new streets that we're hoping to get, you know, a full life out of. So.
Okay, I think down this way. Mr. Shaw?
Any concerns with supply? I'm assuming these are copper replacements. Is that accurate?
Right.
Do you have any concerns with supply?
There was a little bit of a concern earlier this year on the supply of copper. We're not hearing that that's going to be ongoing. And thankfully, that's the case because we want to keep using copper. There was also a struggle with brass fittings and the valves and things. But that being said, thankfully, we've had an ongoing supply and haven't had issues where we've had to stop work.
Thank you for your continued work on this, and also thank you for the site buildup. And I think residents are going to feel appreciative that they can do that check and get that information themselves.
Ms. Powell.
Thank you. Thanks to staff for putting this together. This is really neat, and I think it'll be very useful for our residents. It's hard to see where this kind of cutoff line is on the west side where it starts to get green. What area is that? Is that west of McLean? Or is that west of Randall?
It's going to be mostly Randall Road. Yeah, without getting too granular in detail, Valley Creek, for example, is anticipated to all be lead-free, so that's copper. So that's going to be a little bit east of Randall. One thing I should mention, a lot of this data is based on the age of the construction. So we're going to continue to find information as we go. We're trying to be conservative and make sure we don't miss any is essentially our approach. So, yes, as we find out that, there was a pretty significant period from 1965 to 1986 where there's, essentially, it's unknown because it could have been completely copper, it could have been completely lead. So anything prior to 1965 is anticipated to be lead until we prove otherwise. And we'll continue to update this data as we go, for sure.
So do our crews have like an app or something that they're using in the field to update this information while they're out?
Yes, the meter shop crews are able to update the information live as they observe what's visible at the meter. However, we track that separately from updating this because of, for numerous reasons, it could be copper at the meter but still lead either on the public side or just outside the home from a spot repair that could have occurred right at the inside of the home. So we do track that information, but we still anticipate that it is lead up until the time that we excavate at the B-box and are able to observe what the pipe material is. Again, we're taking the most conservative approach on this to ensure that we're handling it each situation appropriately.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, thank you. Just, you know, a word of advice, I guess, or just a comment that make sure you document all your time and expenses because we don't know what this is going to bring in five or 10 years. And there may be opportunities to reimburse for a lot of things that are not reimbursable now. And if you don't have the records, you won't get a dime.
Sure.
State money or federal money. Okay, thank you.
Just for the benefit of the public, this will be live on our homepage, cityofelgen.org, beginning tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next item up is a presentation from Amanda Harris, who's going to be talking about design options for the DuPage Court Revitalization Project. And there she is.
Good evening, and thank you for putting up with me for three weeks in a row. As City Manager Kozel noted, tonight you will see a few options for council to provide direction on for the DuPage Court Revitalization Project. We're going to discuss everything you see up there. So we'll start with a project update. We will review the three project options. I'll review what those numbers look like and what the potential impact will be, and then we'll have some time for questions there at the end. So here you can see a few images of DuPage Court, kind of located there between Spring and Villa here in downtown. Some of these images are quite old, but you can see that there are trees, there are buildings, there are businesses, and now some residential, if, you know, 40 DuPage Court continues along the way, we'll have residential there as well. DuPage Court in the last several years has had some paver buckling, as well as the use of the change, the uses of the space have changed quite a bit over the last few years as well. So where are we? So as a reminder, council saw the schematic, which was presented back in October for consideration and approval with the DLA LTD. That was presented after staff had already seen the schematic and presented it to those immediately impacted businesses at DuPage Court, as well as the surrounding areas. Letters were sent, and we provided a postcard for people to submit feedback on. And since then, as I've said, we had that original contract approved. And at this point, we are on schedule to begin construction early in 2023, so long as council approves the budget, which this is included in. So this was the original schematic that was provided. There on the right side of the screen, you can see Spring Street, and on the left, that is Grove. The north side shows 40 DuPage, 30 DuPage, and where the DNA and Chamber ESO are all located. The south side there shows Dream Hall and Al's Cafe along with a few other businesses. And in this, you will see contemplated seating areas for those restaurants, arches on both the north and the south side, and all the pavers at grade level. So there are no elevations anymore. So those donuts that are currently there that hold those trees are not in this new schematic. One of the main key takeaways was that the space be flexible in use and that the grade stuff all be grade level. So here's what we heard from the community. In general, everyone is very excited about this project. They think that the layout is great, the flexibility is really important, and that so far, the consistency with the design and how this design incorporates both modern touches and what else is in downtown Elgin has threaded the needle really well. Here are some other things that we received that we took and have further worked with DLA to kind of improve upon the schematic. One of the requests we got was the inclusion of a bump out on Spring Street. You can see on the left side of your screen there how the sidewalk kind of bumps out. This is to provide better visibility for pedestrians and bicycles. Staff also heard that the lighting in the court should be consistent with the night sky guidance, and that string lights in the court would be really nice to have, and a request for bicycle racks. One of the other requests was additional power all throughout the courtyard for use for events. And lastly, a request for an option that had both trees and canopies. So staff took all of these items back to DLA, and they very patiently created a few different schematics for us to present this evening. So with that, I will run through them with you. Option One is going to show you the closest to what we have recently seen with the original schematic. This uses canopies rather than trees. Option Two uses trees instead of canopies. And Option Three has both trees and canopies. One thing you'll see as we get a little bit later is an alternate that can be added to any of these options that includes that bump out that was requested. So this is Option One. You'll note a few changes. The use of the pavers remains the same, but some additional touches have been added. In that center performing area, we now see what looks like a clock depicted, which is an Elgin touch, which is very neat. Rather than having archways on both the east and the west side, we only have them on the east side now. And that is really to provide a lovely view from Villa. So as soon as you turn on to DuPage Court, you get a great big sign that shows you exactly where you am. It really creates the place. And rather than arches on the left side on Grove, you have what I call wings, the kind of sculptural elements that are complementary to that arch. You'll note that there are four canopies. Those are the big white circles there. Those are hardscaped, as are the lights. The green areas that you see on both the left and the right side show where those arches and wings will be. Those would be native plantings. And then the umbrellas that you see depicted there on the bottom right are symbols. We aren't sure exactly what shade will be provided for Al's Cafe, but something will go there. And it would be duplicated for Dream Hall as well. So now I'm going to show you a few different views. So this is a rendering of what it would look like kind of from an aerial view coming down from Villa. You can see that the sign is really prominent, and it clearly depicts where you are. You see the string lights all throughout the space, as well as some upright lights that have caps on the top. Rather than concrete benches, we have opted to use a metal bench for a variety of reasons, but mostly because those hold up better in a space like this. And again, these are the canopies rather than the trees. The next view is from the street level. You can see, rather than a typical bollard, these are more of a planter-style bollard. They are movable. The hardscaped items you can see in this are the curbs where the arch is planted, and the canopies, as well as those benches around the canopies. And then an aerial from the Grove side. The benches and planters on the left side there are all movable. They're just really placed there so you get a good visual for what these would look like. And that other view, you can see here, those sculptural signs leading into DuPage Court on the Grove side are complementary to the bigger arch, but pay respect to the fact that this is not a main intersection or a bigger intersection like it is on the opposite side, and doesn't tower over the court. Here you can also see bike racks have been provided. Option Two, the layout here again is very similar to what we saw before, but rather than canopies, this shows trees. You'll note that there are five trees rather than the four canopies. But again, pretty much everything else is the same. Here you see an aerial view. You can see the green trees spread throughout. And the same view from Spring Court, but looking from the street level. This is from Grove Court, aerial view of the trees there. And then the street level view. Option Three is the hybrid option. This includes the use of five trees and two canopies. One thing that's important to note here is that the trees have been placed in such a way so that should canopies or umbrellas be used for those restaurants at the seating area, rather than have canopies back to back, it would be a canopy and then a tree. So you're really breaking up the space with the greenery there. Another addition to this is overhead canopies over the main performing area that really work to designate that space as a gathering space, as a place for people to sit and watch events. Oh, I'm so sorry. And I should note, too, this is the drawing where you can see what a bump out on Spring Street would look like. Yep. I should also note there that this is not raise that intersection. It does just create a bump out that increases that pedestrian and bicycle visibility. And here's an aerial view, what this option would look like. Here you can see the canopies on both the far sides with the trees in the middle, and then those canopies around that big central area. And then a street view. And then here you have the view from Grove. And then the street view here. I like this view because you really can see exactly what that arch looks like, especially if you can look all the way up to Villa. So with that, we're going to recap these options. I should note, too, that all of these options include all-new underground work, so that sewer sanitary and water, as well as upgraded electric. So Option One, again, the use of the canopies providing shade. Option Two uses trees. Option Three is a hybrid. A grant through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for $1 million was secured with the assistance of State Representative Muller. And then the remaining funds for this project would be allocated through the TIF, as with the Hemmans and the other projects you've heard about this evening. This is included as part of the proposed budget. So here's what all of these break down to. Option One comes out to 1.9 million. That's the use of the canopies. Option Two, which uses the trees, is 1.7. Option Three, which has both, as well as those center canopies, is a 1.8. And then we are also able to include that bump out to any of these options for $107,000. Each of these items includes a 10% contingency rate. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Harris. Mr. Dixon.
Well, to start us off, how you doing, Amanda?
I'm good.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for providing the options. Got a few questions for you. I will start with, is there anything structurally happening in the DuPage Court area that is calling for us to do any rehabilitate, reconstruction of any sort? Is there anything happening that's like wrong, is what I'm asking?
Is there anything wrong with DuPage Court at the moment?
Yes, structurally.
Ooh, that's a good question. Mike Poobens, do you want to talk about this at all?
I can tell you that we have done some evaluations. DLA is working on that as well. And as I know at the beginning, there's quite a bit of buckling happening at DuPage Court. Beyond that, I'm definitely going to kick it to the professional here.
Thank you. Did you just mention the paver settlement? Yeah, so really, what really got us started down this path was on the north side of DuPage Court. There's settlements in the pavers, we believe due to the vaulted sidewalks. So part of this project will be to find a permanent repair for that. So when we put pavers back in, then we don't have future settlement. Outside of, I mean, that was really the primary condition concern for us. Wasn't driven by water main or sewer, but the condition of the pavers.
Okay. And is that, did that issue spark the redevelopment of DuPage Court in general?
Yes. I think it's probably a combo platter of that and the funds secured by State Representative Muller. So at the beginning of the year, myself, Ms. Nava, and Mr. Poobens applied for a grant through Decio for this project, after we did some initial work with DLA to figure out what kind of scope we were looking at. And after we received word about the funding, we realized this is probably the best opportunity we're going to be able to have to really check a lot of boxes and have the support to do that. And especially now knowing what the budgets have come in at, it seems like that does the right thing for us.
Okay. And, Mr. Poobens, what would have been the dollar amount had we solely focused our attention on fixing the issue of the settling that was happening?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look. Do you have something?
I'd have to math it real quick, but I can work.
An estimate will do. It doesn't have to be exact. Just looking for a ballpark.
$250,000. $250,000 if we have to excavate, fix vaulted sidewalks, repave. That's really off the top of my head, so.
Okay.
I'll take half of it in cash though, if you want to give it to me.
Okay. All right. And question about the sitting areas. We currently have sitting areas where we allow Al's Cafe to have outdoor sitting area in DuPage. Also 51 also has an outdoor, and theirs is actually gated off, I believe, of some sort. So with this new design, would it include us providing their seating, or would it just be what it is right now? We'll just, you know?
No, they would provide their own seating. And then we were having conversations with them to figure out what is the best solution for providing shade. So one of the things we want to make sure that happens is that the conditions of the pavers, the condition of the paver stays 100% as long as possible. And when you have drilling into those, it does cause damage over time. Now, yes, there's a necessity, but if we can find a solution to solve that problem before it begins to be a problem, that's the goal.
So would we be dictating what furniture they buy to put on city property so that it fits aesthetically with the design?
It's an excellent question. I don't have an answer for you now, but I can't imagine a world that we would dictate to a business what.
Well, Cogly said we can.
Well, then he's the boss.
You want to say that publicly?
The use of our sidewalk areas requires a license agreement, so it's an issue the city can require a certain type of furniture and installation. We can control that, and particularly when it comes to attaching things to our pavers, we can prohibit that. So we have discretion as to how we want that to go and to look.
All right. Thank you.
And then I just wanted to, you know, you had spoken about what else, you know, was the driving force. Electrical infrastructure was another significant piece, yeah.
How so?
Well, that's a great follow-up question. I just assume people know what's in my brain. Right now, there's not enough electrical power out there for a lot of the things that people want to do. So a lot of the events, you know, even things like the tree lighting, we have to bring generators out for. We just had an event with the Culture Arts Commission for art harvest, and we had to bring generators out for that because the court, when it was designed, wasn't designed for that purpose. So it's really like the change of the use of the space really is what amped that up.
Okay. And so then are we thinking about the possibility of moving the farmer's market into DuPage Court?
The farmer's market does already utilize DuPage Court.
Well, it's mostly on the other street. It kind of like spills over into the Page Court, but everything else is really centered on the other street.
That's correct. So we had DLA, they lovingly did us a map with what tent layout would look like.
DNA?
DLA, sorry. The firm we're working with. And you can absolutely, with this new design, fit significantly more tents, which is really important if we're looking to host events. So that was really helpful scope. But, you know, I would have to talk to Jen at the DNA. I'd be surprised if they'd be able to fit the entirety of the farmer's market in DuPage Court, even with this renovation.
Yeah. And speaking of DNA, can you tell me what the communication is like as far as like their input in talking about the farmer's market or just the fit? Were they involved in the process at all? What was the conversation like with them being our downtown neighborhood association?
Yeah, so we sat down with them quite a while ago and said, hey, we're thinking about this project. Can you kind of get some general information for us before we even spoke to anybody else as far as, you know, getting a schematic done? So they helped us with that. We also attended a DNA stakeholders meeting where we presented the option, the schematic to the group and solicited feedback. And it was also included in a few emails as well.
Okay. And so they offered feedback, I would assume?
Yes.
To this project? Did anything change based on that feedback?
No, not really. You know, aside from the very few specific requests, we've gotten people at the DNA stakeholders meeting, the postcard we got said, it looks great with a smiley face. Everyone seems to be really thrilled with the direction we're heading.
Okay. And last question, we're, well, I think it's the last question. The street level businesses there, so we have Al's Cafe, we have 51, and then we also have Pro Boxing that just came in there. Also the chambers there on the corner, the symphony, things of that nature. I normally see these types of designs for street level businesses that offer a lot of retail. So was that a thought in this particular design in getting to that point where we're maybe zoning this area, this area for retail, so that we can get the proper amount of usage out of it on a day-to-day basis, that it creates the foot traffic that's necessary? Because I mean, Pro Boxing is probably going to get more foot traffic or just as much foot traffic as 51 and Al's Cafe. So really what I'm just trying to get at is it's a lot of money to spend on the DuPage Court, but are we going to get the, are we really going to get our bang for the buck in our future planning for this, for the downtown in general, and specifically this area?
Oof, that's a detailed question. I'll give you my best approximation of an answer, but I hope for the best. I think that one of the main intents of the design for this is really to create a place in downtown. You know, we have a lot of restaurants, we have a lot of retail businesses, we have a lot of nonprofits, but there's no real gathering space. Actually, one of the people who helped work on the design said her husband works in downtown and he would frequently go get a lunch, but there's not really a place outside that's open seating to sit and eat at. A lot of people visit Viator Cafe, a lot of people, you know, visit the retail shops. They want to have a place to sit down for five, 10 minutes and enjoy just being outside in a space. And DuPage Court with this design really allows you to do that. It also creates a place where if, you know, you wanted to have a pop-up event, if you wanted to have a musician, if you wanted to have, you know, an outdoor table for your thing, if you wanted to have vendors for something, with this redesign, you're able to do that. And having a place that is attractive and welcoming to walk through as you cross through those streets, again, it's that creative placemaking. If you're making a place that people want to spend time, then it's really going to elevate the entire area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Thorne.
Thank you, Amanda. Curious, I looked to the DNA for their downtown involvement, what they do for our city, and I'm wondering if they talked with you and if they had a choice of one, two, or three?
They did not, no. We presented this to council first for direction.
I just wanted to see what their thoughts were. I like number three because I like both canopies and trees, but I wondered where their thoughts were.
I can certainly reach out to Ms. Fukala at the DNA. I will say that we had some pretty detailed conversations, and I know that, you know, we're checking the boxes they were concerned about, making sure we're providing shade, making sure we're providing seating, making sure, you know, that all that infrastructure is there. Electrical, as Mr. Coles noted, is really, really important. And then having everything really at grade level. But I can certainly ask for their opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else down here? Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. So if somebody goes and wants to sit down and have lunch, like that's not Al's or 51, they would use the benches? Is that what that was for? Or can they use 51 and Al's Cafe?
I mean, as Mr. Cogly noted, those, we have, you know, lease agreements with them to use our space. But the benches that are provided in the court are for people to spend time and enjoy the area.
And what's nice about them, in case you have an event, they're removable too, right?
All except the metal ones that are under the canopies, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Paul, you got a question?
I did. Amanda, can you go back to some of the pictures? I had a question about, when you talk about placemaking and providing space for people to gather and maybe go have lunch, outside of those table areas that may be provided by the adjacent businesses, are there going to be tables available just for people to sit and have, like you mentioned before, have lunch at? Or would they have to do that on a bench?
You know, it's something that we're still discussing, but at this point, benches are what we have depicted.
Because I think if we're trying to provide a space for people to go and grab food, maybe from, you know, a downtown business, or bring their own sack lunch or what have you, people want a table to sit down and eat and gather at. It's kind of hard to do that at a bench. And unless you're specifically buying food from, say, Al's, you're probably not going to be able to sit in their seating area. And the same with, further down the way, with Dream Hall. So that's some of the feedback I have. I had the same question about DNA's involvement. I'd be interested before we wade in on this design, hearing specifically from them, their feedback, because I think they're a major stakeholder, and I just want to make sure that we've taken their needs and concerns into consideration. The other question I have, or concern I have, with the options that have the trees, right now, one of the things that disturbs me just a tad bit when I'm downtown, with the trees that we have downtown now that are surrounded by the pavers, there's this big gap and big open area that, A, doesn't look attractive in my mind, is a potential hazard. As these trees get larger, are we going to run into that same problem here? I would think the answer would be yes, because as the tree, as the trunk gets bigger, as the tree gets taller, I mean, obviously, we're not going to be planting a species of tree down there that would, you know, grow to be, you know, 30 feet tall. But my concern is, just looking ahead, what is that going to look like? And even with the pavers, sounds real high maintenance in terms of, we got to be careful what we put on it. We got to be careful what, you know, what we drill there. I mean, we haven't even talked about snow and ice control and removal on these pavers. So that's some of my concern. And maybe, Mike, from a maintenance standpoint, can we talk about what that looks like? And like I said, the tree, the tree issue?
So we've actually talked to staff to get that feedback, to make sure that this was feasible. So DLA has proposed that turf would go in around the tree. So again, we're talking about a grade level situation to help alleviate that. And as it comes to, you know, what you're able to do on the pavers, one of the first requests we made is that these could be driven upon, because that's a barrier to a lot of the stuff that we sometimes do. And when it comes to snow removal and that type of stuff, having everything at grade level is really helpful. And because these are thicker pavers, they're going to hold up better than what you would see in a smaller paver. And the Center City crew, we asked them specifically, you know, you guys are the ones taking care of this. What are your thoughts? And all of those were incorporated into these conversations.
So using salt on these pavers is okay?
To the best of my knowledge, yeah.
Okay. When you talk about the bump out, because I'm generally not a big fan of those, but I want to make sure, when you talk about the bump out, I think you did say that it wouldn't be raised, it would just be, it would be level. It was just a matter of using the pavers to create that look? Is that what you're talking about in terms of the bump out?
It's just the curb. I'll let Mr. Poobens speak about that a little bit more.
Right. The bump out would be created by pouring a barrier curb. There's barrier curb along there right now. It's no parking. You can't park there. So we would remove the portion of the curb where the new work is going to go. We realign it to build the bump out and pave behind it. So when you're going down the street, it's going to look like a typical roadway cross-section. It'll have the pavement and then a barrier curb, a six-inch barrier curb. So the intersection, when we were talking about the raised intersection, one consideration was, as a traffic calming method, you can build raised intersections. And the idea is that vehicles will slow down before they go into them, or it's an unpleasant ride for them. We didn't think that was appropriate here. It's going to be a standard intersection, typical grade, but there will be a standard curb line on the east end at the bump out. And again, the benefit is, you know, with the parking north and south of that, right now, your pedestrians and cyclists, anybody trying to cross, they're trying to look through those rows of parked cars. So the bump out gets them eight feet further out so they can see traffic much better from the north or south. And it shortens the crosswalk by that same distance. So shorter crosswalk, faster to cross, less exposure to traffic.
And my last question or concern, you know, as we're obviously tearing this whole section up and having to do some underground work, I would just request that we look at taking that time to build up our infrastructure in terms of high-speed internet. Thank you. It's not that late, but I have brain farts. High-speed internet connectivity, fiber. Since we're going to have it open anyway, I think that makes sense.
I don't believe there's currently fiber in that area. So I had to check with IT to see if that's an addition that would improve our current internet capabilities downtown.
Yeah, it's something, I mean, if this is the first step and we can continue that throughout the downtown, but obviously, if we're going to, if it's going to be open, if you put it there, it's there because we're probably not going to open this up again for another 25, 30 years.
No, right. That's the idea, yeah. Whatever we want to do, we want to do it in one project.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Roche-Burger.
Yes, thanks. I would like to echo many of the things people have said already. I think, you know, we have, in this last 10 years, tried to do, create a lot of public spaces, and I think we underutilize all of them. So I hope when we think about doing this, we think about really what is the long-term point of it and how we're going to utilize it the best. I think we just, we have the whole riverfront that I feel like is underutilized. We have our new plaza right here that hasn't had a lot of use yet. Just one thing I would say about this particular place, it's, if I think about a European gathering place, or a plaza, or a piazza, it would be mostly used by restaurants. And so that you would have a gathering of people many, many nights a week, not just on an occasion when you have, decide to have a band in the middle. So I would really think about trying to, again, I think someone else brought this up, we have the Chamber of Commerce and maybe a location that could be utilized for either retail or a restaurant, something like that. Try to get the new, the 4,500 square feet at the bottom of, is it 40 DuPage? Am I saying? You know, hopefully, that might be some sort of food place. So just to think long-term, that this could be a gathering place for people, for coffee, for dinner, for, at least for four or five months a year, and think about it as that kind of placemaking. I also think there should be some trees. I'd hate to see it without trees. And I don't think permanent benches are a good idea. And third of all, I also agree with everyone else. All you need to do is put a couple tables and chairs. I've always said, I'll go to Costco and buy them, just to put something so people could sit down that aren't attached to, you know, you could get your coffee and maybe you're walking down from a rapido and sit there. So I would also advise to have some unattached chairs and tables.
I'd suggest before we go too far down the road that we send this to the DNA and let them review it. let them review it. And they need to have the, some people from the farmer's market come in and take a look and see how that's going to impact them, because that now has become a one and a half million-dollar summertime event. And how does this whole thing play in together, and how, what's the synergy with them on Friday nights? And how do they, how do they see this impacting them? Because they're certainly going to impact them. Mr. Dixon.
Yeah, I was actually just going to give a little bit more detail than that, is, I would wonder what they're, which one of these do they recommend? So right, like you're asking us right now for one, two, or three. I would be curious if they want one, two, or three. And maybe the next time that you come back to talk about this, and maybe they're reporting out with you, however you want to do it, but I think having their voice at this is integral, because they've done a lot of great work in downtown, and I think, you know, I think the best thing to do is to continue working and getting their opinions, especially on a project this significant. So, thank you again, Amanda, great job. Thank you, Mike.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager.
Item C is an agreement relating to the demolitions at 50 Kimball Street, 260 Brook Street, 276 Brook Street, 275 North Grove Avenue, 55 Franklin Street, and 314 through 320 Brook Street, and 69 Ann Street. This is initiative regarding Tom Roser, who owns these properties. It's an area bounded by Kimball Street, Brook Street, Ann Street, and Grove Avenue. Mr. Roser purchased these properties around 2007 and 2008 with the purchase, with the understanding that he would be selling these properties to the city for future city-driven redevelopment. The city owns the remainders of the properties that are interspersed within these areas. Staff and Mr. Roser have been discussing his potential redevelopment of these properties, and these areas that we're talking about this evening are included as one of the three redevelopment areas being studied and planned, with the recent agreement the city approved with the Lamar Johnson Collaborative. To continue preparing this area for redevelopment, the city and Mr. Roser have been discussing the demolition of these various properties, and this proposed agreement contemplates Mr. Roser demolishing the structures on five of the properties. The city will be reimbursing Mr. Roser in a not-to-seed amount of $308,000 and $308,650,000. And the funding for this is through the TIF eligible expenses in the Central Area TIF for demolition. This is an initiative that has been crafted by Corporation Council Bill Cogley, in the other hat that he wears as Chief Development Officer for the city, and it's something that we've been working on for a number of years, and we highly recommend proceeding with this initiative to set the table for the future development in this area.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Ms. Powell.
Just for clarification, the city is not planning to acquire these properties.
That is correct. This is just for the demolition.
But this is part of the redevelopment area, so when we get those proposals back, it will include options for this newly demolished area for redevelopment.
That is correct.
And Mr. Roser understands that, and is willing to cooperate with that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Long time coming. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Let's see, I'm looking my, I'm sorry here. Item D, Site Remediation Program Services for the City-owned Property at 356 through 358 Dundee Avenue. The city recently acquired this property, and during its due diligence phase, as part of the purchase, certain concentrations of chemicals associated with dry cleaning were identified. The city received a $50,000 credit against the purchase price. This proposed agreement will hire a consultant that will do the work that's necessary for the city to obtain what is referred to as a no further remediation letter from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency.
Move for approval.
Second. Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing non-court, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item E is change order number one to the 2022 Central Area Reservicing Project. In June, the city approved the award of a construction contract to ALAM Concrete Contractors for the Central Area Reservicing Project. This was funded using motor fuel tax funds. Change order items consist of pavement area, which was not originally contemplated during the design process, plus the addition of curb and gutter improvements, and very other matters that weren't contemplated that we asked the contractor to complete as part of the final project. The additional funding is in the amount of $107, $201.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Hearing non-court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item F is Lead Service Line Replacement Reimbursement Program. We got information on this earlier when Eric Wees talked about this. In this instance, the initiative is reimbursing 68 properties that followed the city's recommendation to replace their lead service line. The total estimated cost of reimbursement for these 68 properties is $400,000. And again, I still think it's important to note that this was a program initiated in 2018, four years before the state legislation essentially mandating what the city put in place at that time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Right here. Ms. Powell.
I just want to thank staff for going back and doing this. I know we've talked about it, some of us have heard from residents, you know, obviously concerned, and having questions about whether they're going to be reimbursed, and so this answers that question. Definitely appreciate those residents that were proactive, but I'm also glad that we're able to go back and reimburse them, since we'll be doing this work throughout the city moving forward, just from an equity standpoint. So excited to be able to do this for folks. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon.
Thank you. Question about the 68 homes, as it relates to, how do we identify who those homes were? I'm assuming that they took out contracts of some, I mean, not contracts, but their paperwork with the city of some sort, and that probably helped in identifying who the persons were, who the homeowners were that paid for that. But were there any, is there anyone who maybe is not included in the 68 that did do the work?
And Mr. Wees can provide more information, but briefly, we keep records of those lead service lines that are replaced. Just as you were hearing from the GIS team, it's accurate and up-to-date. The wrinkle in this instance is, there are some property owners that did not have documentation to prove what they paid for. We know that the lines were replaced, but for whatever reasons, the work was able to be done, and they didn't have any documentation to prove that. So we spent some time working on those and averaged the cost for that reimbursement. Other than that, everybody was able to produce documentation establishing what their costs were, and are being reimbursed for that accordingly.
Okay. So the ones who were unable to produce the paperwork, they're still getting something, but maybe not what they spent? Or they're not getting anything at all?
No, they're getting, they're getting an average based on what the costs are for those, despite not having any documentation to prove what they paid for it, but confirmation that their private lead service line has been replaced.
Okay, and that's a part of the 68?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item G is the Ridon-Kane 2022 Subsidy Agreement with PACE and other associated funding service agreements with Kane County. Ridon-Kane is a door-to-door transportation service for persons 65 and over, and all persons with a disability. The city's contribution is determined by the participation level of those Elgin residents 65 and over and with a disability. Kane County has recently expanded this program, so that services are now available to any low-income person living anywhere in the county who needs work-related transportation. In the past, the Association for Individual Development, also known as AID, used to provide the administrative services for this program. They no longer have the ability to do that, and Kane County has assumed the administrative responsibilities for this program beginning in January. This initiative includes a request for authorization to replace AID with Kane County on the previous grant service funding agreements, and again, provides funding in an amount of not to exceed $50,000.
Move for approval.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion? Mr. Dixon.
Yes, just a comment. I want to give a shout-out to Kane County for expanding this program, because it's a wonderful service. And as City Manager Coles will just mention, they recently expanded the service to include those who are low-income. For a very long time, a lot of people were not able to do it, because they, they were not included due to their income. And so this change actually opened up the floodgates, and I've actually utilized the same program through the Sheriff's Office with providing transportation to former detainees to get to and from work until they're able to buy or purchase a vehicle. So I've seen firsthand how that just slight shift has opened up the floodgates. So I'm super happy about this, you know, that we're still doing the 50K, but that the program has actually expanded. So, thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item H is an amendment to the existing agreement with Brown Equipment Company for the procurement of a truck-mounted sewer cleaning vehicle. The city in April of this year, as part of a $1.1 million vehicle purchase package, bought nine vehicles from Brown Equipment Company in an amount of $267,000 and some change. That included a truck, that's the cost for the truck-mounted sewer cleaning vehicle. This October, Brown notified the city that the manufacturer passed along material price increases that it would not be able to honor. That is resulting in the additional request for $24,000. The good news is, if the city agrees to make this additional $24,000 payment, which is the cost of the vehicle, we will receive the vehicle in May of 2023, rather than May 2024, as originally contemplated.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved in second for approval, any discussion?
Sounds good.
Yeah, it does. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero.
Item I are Community Task Force on Policing recommendations, and this item must be removed from the table. We know that the City Council created the Task Force on Policing in September 2021 for the purpose of evaluating the police department and making recommendations for improvement. The task force presented its report of findings and recommendations to the City Council on September 14th of this year, and that includes 26 recommendations. A memorandum was presented to the City Council at the previous committee of the whole meeting with six recommendations identified by staff. That item was tabled, and during subsequent discussions with Councilmembers Dixon and Powell, they requested that the task force recommendations instead be presented in groupings considered by the task force subcommittees. In accordance with that request, this memo presents the six recommendations from the Task Force Subcommittee on Training, Recruitment, Hiring, Retention, and Promotion. Four of the six recommendations in this memo, in the memo before you this evening, were previously included in that November 2nd memo. There are two additional remaining recommendations from the Subcommittee that have now been incorporated in the initiative that's before you this evening.
Move to remove this from the table.
It's been moved in second to remove from the table. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorin?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight-zero. Mayor make the...
Mayor make the motion to approve item number one, the GED education requirement.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve item one. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Rauschenberger.
Yes, thank you. You know, I think this is a controversial ask, but I do support this idea that there are many young people out there, or not even young people, older people that have life experience, and have done a lot of other things, and that, you know, college education doesn't really preclude that you're a wonderful person and a good police officer. So, again, I've had a lot of people suggest to me that we shouldn't pass this, but I am going to support it tonight.
Anything else? Ms. Powell.
Actually, since we have Chief Lally and the entire command staff here, I hope she's buying all of you guys dinner. If someone could come up and, because I've got a question regarding this particular ask, and it's really around best practices in the industry for, like the testing requirements. Does this kind of follow best practices that are out there? I know that there were, during the task force committees, and when we were looking at some of these recommendations, there was some information that was provided that seemed to indicate that more, better-educated officers with college degrees are less likely to engage in use of force. So I wanted to give you the opportunity to kind of talk about that, and how this recommendation falls along best practices in the industry.
So I believe in Kerns and West's report, too, I think they made mention of some best practices, of some research that they also did. I don't know it offhand, I'd have to look at the report, but in terms of the communication that we had in the Subcommittee, that was brought up about, I think it was a specific study regarding use of force and the, how it relates to people with more education. So I think when we look at use of force in education, it also comes down to training inside the department, and what the department policies and procedures are. So best practices, it's dependent upon what the department trains in. So for us, officers have to go to the police academy, they do an in-house academy, they're in field training. Every year, we do training in de-escalation. Officers are trained in crisis intervention. There's continuing training on our policy of use of force. Every use of force incident is reviewed by the review, by the Use of Force Committee to ensure that there's, everything is within policy, but also, it allows us an opportunity, if we need to make some adjustments regarding training, additional training, remedial training. So that was part of the discussion that we had in the Subcommittee, that ultimately the task force ended up recommending the high school degree. And specifically with the high school degree, just to mention, we just did a testing process. Our list was finalized, we have 11 people on our list. So 100 and, roughly 100 and, I think, 10 or 10 to 15 applied. I think 80 showed up for the written exam. Of that, 26 people went to a background. Of that, we interviewed 23, and 11 people made the list. So part of this recommendation ties to, you know, opening up the pool of people to come and take the test, and then it's on us to make sure that they're trained appropriately, and if there's any type of use of force incident that is not within policy, then it's, at that point, depending on what the circumstances are, it's addressed.
Great, thank you. And I think the second item on here that we're, I guess, going to be looking at next, kind of, I think, addresses some of the concerns that maybe some people have regarding the higher levels of education, because going to the preference point system, if you do have a bachelor's degree, if you do have an associate's degree, you can get preference points for that after the testing process takes place. So I think it's a good balance. I know that we're not unique, in that we're struggling with getting more, you know, people to take the test, and being able to attract quality applicants. So I will definitely be supporting this first measure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Shaw.
Just a note, too, it's a GED requirement, but it does not change the age requirements of 21 to 35, I believe is accurate.
Correct. By state law, you'd have to be 21 to be a police officer, so they would have to meet the age requirement.
Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Lally presented some changes to us regarding education requirements and hiring recruitments over a year ago. And the task force is now recommending the same changes already proposed. And the Task Force is now recommending the same changes already proposed. I thank you, Chief Lally, for your patience and quality recommendations from the initial proposal. And I want to remind our colleagues and the community that Chief Lally brought these recommendations to us at the council's request. And I apologize that we didn't recognize it and acknowledge your expertise then, but I'm so glad to see that, that they also agreed with the vote that we had at that time. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Powell?
Yes, just to respond to that, I, I think that this just makes this recommendation even stronger because we have had community input in it. And that was the whole reason why we specifically did not move forward with it. Just the same reason why we didn't move forward with the creation of a civilian review board that you and myself and Councilman Dixon and several of your staff have been working on for quite a while. Because we knew we were going to have the policing task force, and it was a great opportunity for us to allow citizens to have some input. Again, I just want to remind people that we do have a community policing program. That's not a one-way street. So community policing does mean that the community does and should have some say in how they're policed. And this is just a great example of that. And again, I think it just makes this recommendation that much stronger. Thank you.
Excuse me, we had a vote on this back then, I think it was seven two. And I think we understood that because I, I look at myself, somebody who didn't go to college, but I have life experience that I think if this was something that I wanted to choose, I would appreciate that I was given the opportunity. The opportunity to at least apply. And it would be on me whether I would be able to pass all the other tests, you know. And all this, the training that goes involved with the Police Department, you know, I think those tests are important and I get it. But sometimes we don't have the advantage of having a degree. So, thank you.
And I think that's what some of the feedback that we got from the Task Force was that helped us get to this point.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And, you know, while I'm at it, let me just take a moment to thank you for all of your work on the Task Force and all of your patience and all of those meetings and all of the work that you did when you weren't in those meetings. And all of the criticism that you took while doing it with a smile on your face. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, but to this, to this issue at hand, I'll be supporting it. Just to make sure that we're clear, can you talk about what, if any, differences are lying in this one as opposed to the one that was being discussed previously?
So there were, when the Task Force, when we talked in the Subcommittee, generally the preference points were generally the same, but we did have further discussion on how many preference points, what categories. So generally, it was the same, but some adjustments made to number, the qualifications, the categories. But that was a starting point for us to have conversation.
Yeah, and that's the point I wanted to make, that it wasn't the same a year ago. There are some, some things that are very significant in this change, but that came from community members. That came from the Task Force. And had we approved this, we would have shortchanged ourselves because I think this is a better deal. So I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shaw?
Just to clarify, I think we're still on item one though, right, the GED piece? I think we're starting to mix one, two, one and two together. So I'm not sure if there's additional comments on one, maybe to help differentiate.
Okay. My, all my comments were on GED.
Oh yeah, there was no, there was no change on GED from a year and a half ago or whenever to now. That's, they just.
Are you talking about the preference points?
Preference points was number two.
Oh, okay, I get what you're saying now. I got you. Yeah.
I think we're, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion for, we have a motion for number one, correct? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez? Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Number two is that Elgin Police Department should develop a preference point system for police hiring. Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Martinez?
I just have a quick question. Does it ever happen that somebody gets hired and they didn't, they didn't need these preference points? Or does everybody need them? Just out of curiosity.
So currently, the process does not allow for preference points outside of military. So this is a completely new system.
Okay, all right. It's fine. No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, I just want to point out that this, this new preference points system that we're implementing for police is similar to one that we've had in place for a long time for, on the fire side. That's kind of like what this is modeled after. So I think maybe that's what, what you're, what you're thinking about, Councilwoman Martinez.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Item three is the Elgin Police Department should update the police entrance exam with feedback considered by members of the Task Force on Policing, Civilian Review Board, and other relevant residents of the community. Move for approval. Second. Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing done. Clerk, please call the roll.
Actually, just a comment on this one. I know that there were some ask around, I don't think, excuse me, the Task Force got a chance to talk to the, the firm or the psych, whoever it is that proctors the exam to understand how, how the exam is structured, how it's validated, how it's, you know, when, when is the last time it's been updated? And again, I keep throwing out best practices. What are some of the best practices out there? Because when is the last time we updated, we changed the test?
The last time it was reviewed, I want to say, was in probably 2016 or 17. So part of this process would be having those discussions with the testing company to, to answer those questions exactly.
Okay, yeah, definitely. I look forward to that happening. I think there's some, some new tests that are out there that test for social dominance and some of the other things that were discussed during the Task Force, during the Task Force discussions. So I, I think this will be a good exercise for us to go through as a city. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
No.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved seven one. Item four is the City of Elgin should create a salary incentive in conjunction with police contract negotiations for residency and/or off-duty community engagement or volunteerism. Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Shaw?
My only comment on the residency piece, I guess, is I am definitely not in favor of requiring residency at, at any level within the Police Department. And to be honest with you, more broadly with the city, and I think we've had some offline conversations with, you know, different groups on, on what that would look like. My one, my one piece on this is around consistency. If we do something where we provide an incentive for residency for police officers or an incentive for community engagement, I think we would need to look at this more holistically citywide. That would be, that would be my one concern on this piece. And so I'm kind of curious, just from a conversation perspective, what other council members think on that thought process?
Anything else? Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, I don't mind sharing my thoughts on it. I believe that being a police officer is separate and distinct from any other job in, in the city. I think it's a super important, when we're talking about residency, of having officers that live in the city policing the city too as well versus living in the city, I mean, working in the city, policing the city, and going elsewhere. I think when we talk about the community policing model from years ago that we have been implementing, I think that that's really crucial to achieve that also. My point of view on community and just being engaged, I, I think, I'm okay with an officer being incentivized to do that because they're different than someone that may work in public works that's not really interacting with the public to the level and to the degree, certainly as an officer. So, you know, it's not a apples-to-apples kind of assessment to me. I think that it's, it's multi-dimensional and a little, little more nuanced than that. So.
Just a comment from me. I've, I've talked to staff. I've talked to the city manager. I'm going to request that we bring forward discussion, for discussion with the council, that we do away with all residency requirements within the City of Elgin. And that applies to public works. It applies to fire. It applies to everybody. It is becoming difficult. We have some members that are long-term employees, and the requirement is if they don't become a resident, they have to leave. And that's not fair. I think that it's up for discussion, but we have people that are senior management, and we lose senior management because we require residency. And I need, we need to have a discussion about that. Because we're having problems. We're losing our, we're becoming the training ground and people are moving on to other places. So we need to look at that. The world is changing around us, and that's part of the change. So I think that this, that discussion maybe have to come at a different time than this. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree because I think we have to look at people's work, work ethic and the quality of people that we would be missing out of if we put this on residency. And, you know, why only one department, not all? And just like right now, we passed where anybody who is honorably discharged in the military for police gets three points. But if you go for the fire department, you get five points. So it's kind of inconsistent, but just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Rauschenberger?
I definitely support the salary incentive for our police to live within the city. I can't say exactly about the Police Department, but I work for School District U46. And I will tell you the difference between people that come in from other communities and work in Elgin have a very different attitude toward the children in our schools. And I find that really sad. And the, those employees that live in Elgin, have children in the school district in Elgin, I mean, this is just an example, but they are, they're definitely more dedicated to making it the best school system ever. So I think there is a difference, and I think we should give an incentive to become a resident of Elgin and serve our community. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Powell? Did you have both hands? You had two questions.
This garnered a whole lot of conversation with the Task Force, with other members of the community. And I think this was a happy medium that people came to in terms of falling just short of requiring residency of all of our police officers, which I know some, some of my colleagues are, have expressed concerns or, and not in favor of doing with recognizing that there is value in having the folks that police our community, live in our community, live amongst the residents in our community, have their kids go to school and interact with other people in the community, be involved here. So I think this is a good compromise. I realize that, and obviously, as it's stated here, this is something that would have to be part of our police contract negotiations. But I, I think it's a, I think it's a good compromise. So I will be supporting it.
Mr. Shaw?
Won me over. All right. I'm a yes.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll. You have to wait your turn.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Item five is the City of Elgin should increase the incentive for police officers that are fluent in any language other than English to, from $50, to, from $50 to $100 every month.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for approval and discussion. Mr. Shaw?
The one question I had on this one was the language itself, just due to census data. I mean, to me, it's very, it's very blatant. It's English or Spanish? After Spanish, it feels like it drops off so drastically that it's, the chances that you would have that foreign language and you'd meet up with someone that needed that foreign language is almost nonexistent. I, I'm curious to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think they're, yes, speaking Spanish is absolutely the most dominant request. However, there are situations, especially when you have victims and they speak another language. If you have an officer, instead of going through a translate, translation service that we do have, when you actually have a physical officer there who can show empathy and have that conversation, that's where the value is. So.
You will do some dispatch out. You're saying if you get into a situation, I mean, you can.
Yeah, we, we have a translation service that any officer, they have it on their smartphone. However, it doesn't replace the actual officer who speaks that language. And in those rare instances where we would need it, that's the level of service we should be providing our community, not a translation service.
And so you will purposely though, like if you, if you have a situation like that and know of an officer that, that's available?
Yes.
You, you can bring that officer.
Yeah, we, if we have some, and depending, we have officers that speak other languages besides Spanish. And if, if, we, and we know that, and if we have a victim who's saying, I only speak this, you know, it's, it's better than that kind of informal, very, you know, mechanic translation service. So that's the value in it.
Changing hearts and minds tonight. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Good? Thank you, Mayor. Is sign language covered under this?
We would include that, that, yes. That would be also, we have a couple officers who do sign.
Okay.
Yep.
Ms. Rauschenberger?
I was also going to say it's not, we're not just serving just the people of Elgin. There are many people that drive through Elgin, work in Elgin, come from other places. So. So, yeah. Another language, I think, is always helpful for anyone. I always wished that I had a second language personally.
Ms. Powell?
I was going to actually address what Dustin said. Obviously, sign would be included in this. And yes, definitely Spanish is obviously the dominant second language here in Elgin. But the Greater Chicago area is also home to the largest Polish population outside of Warsaw. So it, it's probably not, you know, uncommon for us to run into folks that speak Polish. There's also a significant Lao population here too. So I think having folks that are bilingual, trilingual, in different languages and acknowledging that and rewarding that, I think, is a good thing. So definitely supportive of this.
Anything else?
Pigletting does not count. Sorry.
Mr. Dixon?
I just want to actually point out, Commander Sidney, we were at the luncheon today, and this came up in conversation because someone else was asking, hey, we need someone that can speak sign language.
Sure do.
And, and Sidney, on the spot, said, actually, we have some officers that do. So I'm glad that Councilman Good raised that point and, and how timely was that? So I just wanted to say, give a shout out to Commander Sidney because he actually, you know, was, was ready with an answer. So.
Good job. Good job, Kevin.
Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved eight zero. Item six is the Elgin Police Department should continue to pursue nonviolent and conflict transformation training to continue a reduction in use of force and included in a focus on social dominance and power dynamics.
So moved.
Second. Moved and second for approval and discussion. Training's a good thing. Ms. Powell?
Yes, I would just ask if Chief Lally can talk about some of the work that you are doing in this area?
Yes, so I want to give a lot of credit to Task Force member Dr. Joshua Brockway, who's in the audience. We had a conversation while the Task Force was going on, and he has some connections through the Nonviolence and Conflict Transformation Group out of Rockford. And so he was familiar with some of their work. And through that, while the Task Force was just finishing up, we decided to host a training. The command staff was in the training along with some community members, really looking at nonviolence and conflict training and conflict transformation. And so just recently, about a week and a half ago, myself, Josh, the trainer, and then also Detective Dan Rouse, we met as a group to kind of figure out what our next step. we met as a group to kind of figure out what our next steps are in terms of bringing this training to the community, bringing it into the department, but also recognizing the fact that at some point the department needs to pull away from the community portion. So really pushing it back into the community, letting the community be aware of what that type of training is, what it can do, but also having the officers be trained in the principles and concepts. So we have a meeting scheduled in a couple weeks after the Thanksgiving holiday to kind of formalize our next steps too. So I want to give great thanks to Dr. Brockway and for his help in this. So it's, it was a very good training. And I think it will bring great value to not just the department, but to the city.
And again, this is something that actually I think the Rockford Police Department actually went through.
Correct. Probably about five or six years ago, roughly.
Great. So it's something that's already kind of being used in other police departments and has value for not only the police department, but for the community. Also want to take this opportunity to acknowledge some of our task force members that are here in the audience. Denise Haven, Josh Brockway, Carol Bailey. And even though she's not a task force member, she came to all of our meetings, Sherry Liskey. So thank you all for being here tonight as we start working through these recommendations.
Anything else? Ms. Martinez.
Chief, I kind of remember that maybe like five years ago, the police department went to two other countries and to New York City. And it seems like that was the beginning when you started bringing a lot of this nonviolence in policing. And it was just impressive how there was a training in SWAT that I attended. And it was just like, you brought out the Y-bar. And it was just incredible because it's this Y-bar that you put together and of course, it's a Y. And how, I don't know who it was in the police department, but he was a big guy with a bunch of muscles. And I remember they were able to go ahead and hold him down with that without even like touching him. And then other things that, like, I remember there was an extinguisher that was filled up with water and you spray that to anybody and you don't have to touch them, they'll do whatever you say. And then there was just quite a few things. So I commend you for thinking of these things and then for being so open, like in this case, with an example that somebody brought. And always been open to other ideas, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Rauschenberger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thoron?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-0. Announcements from the council.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Took the words right out of my mouth. Be kind to someone this holiday season. I will say that on Thanksgiving, we are having the Community Thanksgiving Meal, the Love Thy Neighbor event at First United Methodist Church from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Please come out and have a bite to eat with the community members. So it is open to the public, anyone, no matter who you are. You can come out and get a meal. And again, that's on Thanksgiving Day from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So be safe out there this holiday season, put your seatbelt on. And, yeah, just be kind to people, that's all. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Anything else? Announcements from staff.
Nothing specific, Mayor, but at the next meeting on December 7th, we will aggregate all of the information that we received from the council members, as I said earlier, regarding the pulls in the budget. We'll provide that information to the council in advance so they can review that. But the public will have the benefit of seeing what council views as the proposed recommendations for changes from the council. And we'll be able to go down the line in an orderly fashion making decisions on whether we want to make those amendments to the proposed budget. Thank you for your time. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Everybody enjoy their Thanksgiving and their holiday season. Clerk, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
It's moved in second to adjourn, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.